Ladies and gentlemen, we were trying to get the sound turned on and found out I had to do that again. So now we know. Welcome everyone to the April 19th meeting of the Gastonia City Council. And certainly we've got a nice group here tonight, which of course we thought we might have. The, I would like to at this time, if I may, before I introduce Councilman Kellogg for the prayer, after which by the way, we will stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag behind us here. For just a, once, I call it the point of personal privilege again, to mention two different situations. We have talked many times before that we, in the city of Gastonia, it's always anyone who's had a sadness or bereavement, that's important. That's important to their family, it's important to the ones that they love. But a very interesting, two interesting stories happened this past week that I think that you should be certainly aware of, or just know about, the council and certainly all of us. Many years ago, a lady by the name of Phyllis Tucker, with a lady, came to Gastonia, brought here by her daughter, Marcia Jones, and she was a tireless strong worker for so many charities, very, very strong in her church, and just a wonderful person. She turned 100 years old Saturday week ago. I was asked and honored to, with a large group of her friends and family, to give her a key to the city of Gastonia. And she made the statement at that time, at the age of 100, 100, that she is felt like the most famous person in Gastonia. And everyone thought that was super nice. Last Saturday, I attended her funeral, and she passed away. A hundred years in seven days, and she was just a vivacious, beautiful lady. Phyllis Phillips, no, not Philip Phillips, Fisher Tucker, and she's just a wonderful person. Second thing is a very, very interesting story, and I'm glad to see that the chief, the chiefs are here, Chief Hutton and Chief Welch. That same day as Ms. Tucker's funeral, was the run for the money. And I don't like to get up too early, but they asked me to be there to welcome people at 7:30 in the morning. And I was, and there was a group from the YMCA seniors group doing the line dance. And they were just loving it, having the best time, so I felt, you know, better after seeing it. Shortly after I got there, one man who was really enjoying himself dancing failed, just fell over. He was out. And I think, I think I saw him hit his head. We immediately gathered around, all of us that we could, so many, and called 911. Within almost minutes, I mean minutes, of course, the police were already there, but they helped, but the Chief Welch, your people were there, and came very, very quickly, and immediately started working on him, and informed us, there was, I'm gonna go ahead and call a name or two because I haven't gotten permission from, Dr. Watts, who is a pediatrician, he was gonna, he was a runner, he started immediately working on him, but they, they said that he was gone, had no pulse, and he had no heartbeat. And so they really, you're fine, just really, really worked hard to bring him around. Then the medics came, and then I saw, besides Dr. Watts, there was another fellow that was a runner, getting ready to run, five miles or whatever. He, he was telling him to do this, do that, and he was doing this, and he did the CPR, and he was, it was, at that time, it was just too late. That was Dr. Dustin Letts, cardiologist. So they rushed him onto the hospital, and as they have it, that's why I want to say this before the prayer, is he came back, and he, they said that he was sitting up in his, in the emergency room, and he was talking. So that was, I want to compliment you, and I want to compliment those guys, ladies that were there, and same with yours too, Chief, helping. So having said that, that's, that's two blessings, as far as I'm concerned, that happened all in a matter of a day, and so in the city of Gastonia. At this time, I will call on for the prayer, Councilman Robert Kellogg.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Reverend Dwayne Burks to come forward and give us a prayer.
Join me in prayer, if you will. Heavenly Father, we rejoice in the stories of life that we've heard from our mayor, and also the story of life refound, as it were, and revived. We thank you for that. We thank you for the beauty of that truth, that in my faith tradition, I see the work of Christ reviving us from our slumbering state of sin. We thank you for that. We pray, Father, that tonight, that everything that's done here would be done decently and in order, and that this would be a time that you are glorified, and that we celebrate this wonderful city that we call home, and these people that we call our friends and our family, whom we love so much. And that's our prayer, Father, tonight. We ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
(Inhales) I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We're gonna move along as rapidly as possible here. Adam sees the adoption of the agenda is their motion.
It's all moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you. Now, we have under item D, four, under the awards ceremonies and promotions, which we always certainly do at the beginning, is a proclamation. Number one is a Child Abuse Prevention Month 2016, is the presentation by Councilman Humble. And it shows up on the one.
I'd like to ask Ms. Doty Shear. She'll join me at the podium, please.
Whereas the motto of the city of Gastonia is great place, great people, great promise, and whereas our children represent the potential of our community to achieve that promise, and whereas the children of our community are reliant on our adult citizens to provide the necessary resources to achieve their potential, a stable environment including adequate shelter, nourishment, and education, and also freedom from physical, emotional, psychological, or spiritual abuse and subsequent trauma, and whereas professionals across multiple disciplines regularly convene to address needs and develop resources to educate and inform the public of child safety concerns, including nonprofit agencies, public schools, Department of Health and Human Services, law enforcement, the judicial system, and support systems, including the medical, faith, and counseling communities, and whereas evidence-based practices show that regular and consistent public education regarding child abuse prevention, including models of awareness, appropriate preventive action, and systematic therapeutic treatment, in fact significantly reduces reports of child abuse over time in a community, whereas the city of Gastonia, Gaston County, and the state of North Carolina are committed to preventing child abuse, and call upon citizens from all walks of life to participate in that prevention. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of Gastonia do hereby proclaim April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and urges its citizens to join together in creating a safe and nurturing community where children can achieve their potential and promise free from abuse. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Gastonia to be affixed this 19th day of April in the year of our Lord 2016. John D. Bridgeman, Mayor.
There you go. Thank you, sir. Welcome, Miss, say a few words.
I want to thank y'all for the proclamation, and I have, I always come bearing gifts, you know this.
Sure.
Except for maybe the last two times I wasn't in front of y'all. We have moved to our new office, which is at the Remount Executive Center on Remount Road, and I want to invite y'all to our candlelight vigil, which is this coming Friday night at 7:30, and anyone else that would like to come. This is to recognize Child Abuse Prevention Month, remembering and honoring all children affected by violence. It starts at 7:30, and it's behind the First Presbyterian Church, it's in the back parking lot. I've also given y'all a copy of the new schedule of our Darkness to Light Stewards of Children training. If you truly want to learn about child sexual abuse, instead of what you hear on the media recently, you need to come to this training. And this is open to all adults who have anything to do with children. It's a two-hour-long training, it is a nationally recognized training, and it is $15 per person. If you want one of these on my way out the door, all I'll have to do is hand it to you. Thank you very much.
Doty, thank you.
This is, this is Jill Pigram, she's one of our board members.
Right.
She's gonna help me hand these out to y'all. And these are the last ones I have.
Oh. You'll put him one down here. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Did you say a blowhard? Okay, thank you, I'll take it. Thank you. Doty?
Of course. Oh, let me interrupt you for just a second.
Go right ahead.
I was just informed that the gentleman who collapsed on Saturday is doing well.
That is good news.
His cousin's sitting right here.
Chris, that's your cousin. Wonderful news. That's great. And I was wanting to hear that. Thank you, Dave. Proclamation number two is Guardian Ad Lightum Volunteer Appreciation, and it's by Councilman Jim Gallagher. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask for Rasha Miller and the program director for Guardian Ad Lightum, and all of the Guardian Ad Lightum that are here to come on up.
All the people behind me are volunteers for the Guardian Ad Lightum, and this is a proclamation for them. Whereas the Guardian Ad Lightum program, which exists in every county throughout the state, serving more than 15,000 children a year, has established a distinguished record of public service through its work to provide trained community volunteers who help abused and neglected children by advocating for their best interests when they are involved in the court system. And whereas the court appoints Guardian Ad Lightum's advocates to investigate and determine the needs of abused and neglected children to recommend what is in the best interest for that child, and to represent the child's voice in the court's proceedings. That's a really tough job right there. Whereas the Guardian Ad Lightum's volunteers come from a variety of professional, educational, and ethic backgrounds, collaborating with other participants in the court cases to serve the best interests of the children who find themselves the subject of court cases and often unfamiliar court and child welfare system. Whereas the Guardian Ad Lightum program, through its volunteers, advocates protects, defends children from harm, ensures that these children are provided with court order services they need, and work to assist in developing a plan that will provide these children with a safe, permanent home, which is their chief priority goal. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and the council of the city of Gastonia do hereby proclaim the month of April as Guardian Ad Lightum Volunteer Appreciation Month, and encourage all citizens to honor the contributions of our Guardian Ad Lightum volunteers who are child advocates. In witness thereof, I hereon to set my hand to cause the official seal of the city of Gastonia fixed this 19th day of April in the year of our Lord 2016, and I'd just like to ask everyone to give these volunteers a hand. All the way. The other thing I'd like to do is, one, give this to your program coordinator? And would you all mind going up there and shaking hands with the city council and mayor? They would really appreciate that. Thank you for all you do. Really, thank you.
Mayor, may I offer a motion to have us approve the first two proclamations?
Second.
First two? First two? Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve. Number one and number two, all in paper, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number three, and then we'll get it, is acknowledging commitment to combat opiate addiction, presentation by Councilman Robert Kellogg, and it's D3, agenda. Councilman?
Thank you very much. Before I read this proclamation, I'd like to ask if our police and fire chief, if they would like to join me up here, just in case there's any questions that any of you may have of them. This morning, I attended a meeting that was attended by many healthcare professionals talking about this very subject, and some of the information and the statistics that are coming out from, from these meetings are very staggering. One of those statistics was that Gaston County has the third highest number of heroin overdoses in North Carolina. That's staggering when you think about it. All of North Carolina and Gaston County is third. There's many more statistics, many sobering statistics, but one good thing that I've seen from, from all of these meetings and all of these individuals who are working together is a real collaborative spirit to do something. So I would just like to go ahead and, and read this proclamation. This is a resolution acknowledging commitment to combat opiate addiction. Whereas illicit opiate drug abuse and the abuse of prescription-based opiates has become a crisis of epidemic proportions across our nation, state, and region, and whereas the city of Gastonia and surrounding jurisdictions have experienced a significant increase in the number of opioid overdose and overdose deaths in the past two years, and whereas the increase in opioid abuse causes an ensuing increase in criminal activity, healthcare costs, and the number of children in foster care due to drug addiction of parents or guardians, and whereas the cost to the community in terms of actual expenditures, resources, and human life caused by opioid substance abuse and addiction are extraordinarily significant, if not incalculable, and whereas a collaborative, multidisciplinary approach that includes law enforcement, first responders, the court system, health and human services, counseling, medical providers and facilities, housing, long-term outpatient care, and treatment centers is needed to combat the opioid drug abuse problem. And whereas the city of Gastonia Police and Fire Departments have committed to participate in the Drug Diversion and Treatment, DDAT, program created by the Gaston County Police Department as a collaborative effort to address the growing challenges of the opioid crisis by identifying high-risk individuals and providing effective treatment, which includes a comprehensive, comprehensive structure and extensive period of intervention and progressive intensive case management associated with the opioid epidemic, and whereas the objective of drug diversion and treatment is to reduce recidivism and drug use by diverting high-risk, nonviolent, repeat opioid drug offenders to a coordinated community system of integrated care for intensive treatment and aftercare support. Now therefore be it hereby resolved by the city council of the city of Gastonia, North Carolina, that one, the city of Gastonia shall be fully committed to participating as a partner in the drug diversion and treatment program, and two, the Gastonia Police Department will serve in a law enforcement capacity by identifying and arresting those associated with the manufacturing, distributing, possession, and use of opioids, as well as provide guidance in selecting the candidates best suited for the DDAT program, and third, the Gastonia Fire Department will serve in a first responder role for those in need of prompt medical attention due to the misuse or overuse of opioids, adopted this 19th day of April 2016. And if there's any questions on, on the countywide collaborative effort, I would be, I would actually refer that to our chiefs here, if they would like to answer anything, or if anybody here has any questions.
Robert, I have one question, and that is, I understand that this is a big problem here in Gaston County, because from what I understand, people get hooked on prescription pills and that type of thing, and it starts leading down a bad path, and then they start having, you know, they start robbing to keep up their habit, and then what happens is that they start having problems with their stomachs themselves, and my understanding is that heroin is on the cheap, and people start turning towards that. Is there anything in place, or are we going to develop something for the schools to let the students know that heroin is, you know, or even opioids themselves, it's just a really bad thing to go down some type of path? Is there anything in play on that, that, you know, with the people that you've discussed with?
Oh, I'll actually refer that to them. I was actually thinking earlier and talking to an individual about the fact that we really do need to have education and advocacy in our schools, but is there anything that you know of on, on the works in the, on the county level?
I don't know of anything immediate, but I do know that with this group that we're working with, we're trying to reach out to all of our partners and all of our resources, and trying to address this from many levels, not just the law enforcement side, of course, and, and that will be a partner that we'll be working with, is to look at what, what can be done to educate as well, because we want to, we want to educate, prevent, and take care of the problems that we have now, so, yes.
Excellent. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Doctor?
Robert, I'm not sure if you're aware, but, you know, the state legislature last year passed a law that required that every physician who prescribes opioids is required to attend one hour of continuing medical education just in proper prescription techniques for opioids. And I think one of the biggest problems that we have is, is when we talk about diversion, is we're talking about, you know, getting barbiturates and hydrocodone, oxycodone, and things like this into the hands of the family members, and I think the education that we need to understand here is that, you know, you know, people use these drugs appropriately when appropriately prescribed, for the right reasons, but unfortunately, when they are left unprotected in your homes, unfortunately, children will get into them, whether it be because they've been told that they can get high from them, and so a lot of times, you know, a couple pills will go missing, then a couple more, and a lot of times unbeknownst to the family members. So I think you have to treat, you know, opioids like, you know, like cash, or gold, or anything that's, you know, really rare, and it's important, well, also you could probably treat it like poison, because you don't want to get poison in the hands of your children. So, so my point is, is, you know, we all at times in our lives may need pain relieving substances to get through and experience, whether it be traumatic or surgery or something like that, but it's, it's, you know, imperative that we are responsible with the way we store these medications, we appropriately, you know, dispose of these medications, and I think that's, needs to really be a big part of the picture, so. So that's where we as a community can begin to do our part. So that's where we as a community can begin to do our part.
I absolutely agree. And this morning, there was a little bit of that that they were touching on as well.
Good.
Do you have anything to add?
We have been working with, I'm glad you brought it up, Dr. Curran, we have been working with our medical providers too, because we really have to work hand in hand, because one affects the other, really, out here with what we're doing, so, yeah, so they're involved in an equal part.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A motion to approve the proclamation?
There is a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? That's unanimous here. The last one is number four proclamation, Fair Housing Month, April 2016, Mayor Protem Todd Pierceall.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask that Vincent Wong with the city of Gastonia come forward to receive this proclamation. The proclamation reads, whereas equal housing opportunity is a right guaranteed to all Americans under Title VIII of the 1968 Civil Rights Law, and each year since the enactment of the National Fair Housing Law, the federal government has designated April as Fair Housing Month. The citizens of Gastonia and Gaston County are encouraged to share in the effort to ensure that fair housing opportunity is a reality for all. The enactment of the Fair Housing Law provides an opportunity for all citizens of Gastonia and Gaston County to rededicate themselves to the principles of free choice and to reacquaint themselves with the rights and responsibilities that are theirs under the law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Gastonia hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Fair Housing Month. In Gastonia and encourage the people of Gastonia to join in reaffirming the obligation of commitment of fair housing opportunities for all. And it is signed this day, April 19th, 2016, by our mayor, John D. Bridgman.
Put you on the spot.
Well, I appreciate you guys the opportunity and recognition of Fair Housing Month. In the essence of time, I don't want to go too much into it, but I want to leave you guys with a thought on one of the posters that I saw the other day, that everybody thrives in a vibrant community. And so that's what we're trying to do, is provide fair and equal housing and get involved in the community, that everybody has the equal opportunities regardless of the neighborhood or zip code that they grew up in. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Motion to approve this proclamation.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Since you're there, thank you, it's unanimous. Item E, Presentation, Fair Housing Poster and Coloring Contest, Winners' Presentation, Mr. Vincent Wong, who is the Housing and Neighborhood Administrator for the city, and Ms. Danette Dai Hud, Compliance Officer.
Well, I want to thank you guys again for letting us recognize, this is the first time that we're doing this coloring contest and the poster contest with Fair Housing. And this was all started with Danette and her initiative. So we hope, you know, we get more people involved, and I actually had a talk with Councilman Pierceall that, you know, there's other agencies in the county that we can work with and make citizens more aware of fair housing opportunities and the things that we're doing in the city. So I want to introduce Danette Dai and let her recognize the winners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Bridgman and council. This year, the nation celebrates the 48th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act. The landmark law was passed one week after the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in April of 1968. The Fair Housing Act, which is Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, makes it illegal to discriminate in the sale, rental, and financing of housing based upon seven protected classes, which are race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status, and national origin. To commemorate and bring awareness to the issue of fair housing, the Housing and Neighborhoods Division sponsored its first fair housing coloring and poster contest with the theme, "Fair Housing Opening Doors." Participation was open to students in grades K through five attending public and private schools. The contest fosters the opportunity for both children and their families to have a better understanding, acceptance, and appreciation for diversity throughout the community. Three schools participated and provided 26 pieces of art. Grades K through two participated in the coloring contest, and grades three through five participated in the poster contest. The Housing and Neighborhoods Division is excited to present our contest winners for the 2016 Fair Housing Coloring and Poster Contest. Winners, as I announce your name, please come forward to accept your certificate and stand in front of council to display your artwork to the audience. For the coloring contest, grades K through two, our third place winner is Cassidy Fox. She's a first grade student at Forest Heights Elementary.
Got to get a hug on the way up.
Tell them to stand in front of the podium, they'll be on TV a little bit by you.
Our second place winner is Stephen Iabelli. He's a second grader at Woodhill Elementary, and his art teacher is Lacey Dellinger. And our first place winner is a student, is a first grade student at Chapel Grove Elementary. Her art teacher is Davida Glenn, and that student is Lily Ohm.
I know it, that's true.
For our poster contest, which was grades three through five, our third place winner is Isabella Lima. She's a fifth grader at Chapel Grove Elementary, and her art teacher is Davida Glenn. The second place is Bailey Rivera. She's a fifth grader at Chapel Grove. And the first place winner for three through five is Cesar Mignon. He's a fourth grader at Chapel Grove as well.
I will just show you second and first place poster contest.
Parents and teachers, I know that you're all extremely proud, and we thank you for encouraging and challenging students to take on such a socially challenging topic while being creative. Your guidance goes a long way in helping to foster diversity within our community. To the students, thank you for participation, creativity, and hard work. Thank you.
Well, congratulations to all of you, and thank you very, very much. I think there's, some of us would like to have that bow for their hair, but some of us don't have hair. Okay? Thank you very much. Danette and Vincent, number two presentation is the Sister Cities Young Artists winners, and that's Julianne Lehman, who is Sister Cities Coordinator. Julianne?
Well, we'll get you a bow if you want one, but you got to get some hair first. All right, Mayor Bridgman, members of city council, and our very large viewing audience this evening, the Sister Cities organization recognizes our 2016 Young Artists Competition winners. Each year, we participate in Sister Cities International's Young Artists Competition. This year's theme was Peace Through People, which, as most of you know, that's pretty much been our theme since day one. We believe in peace through people through and through. Sister Cities International aims to promote peace through people through mutual respect, understanding, and cooperation, one individual, one community at a time. This year's theme, Peace Through People, will commemorate 60th anniversary of Sister Cities International, so it's kind of a big deal. When President Eisenhower founded Sister Cities International in 1956, he stated that if we're going to take advantage of the assumption that all people want peace, then the problem is for people to get together and leap the governments, to work not out just one method, but thousands of methods by which people can gradually learn a little bit more about each other. These artists were then encouraged to draw inspiration from Eisenhower's words and present their vision of how people-to-people exchanges and citizen diplomacy build peace in their communities. And we've been building peace in our community with GoToGermany since, well, for 23 years now, and with Circo Peru for 11. So we've been building some peace ourselves, but the kids have some great art as well. We have many talented artists through this competition this year. Nineteen students participated from just two schools, so, from Forest View and Gaston Day, and we're excited to introduce you to our winners. So in third place, from Forest View, is Caroline Eisenhuth. She is daughter of Amy and Jeff Eisenhuth, and her teacher is Travis Johnson. And are you in the picture? Yeah, good. And they have, she chose to not to speak about her piece, so. She's the true artist, doesn't want to ruin it with her words. So, and in second place, from Gaston Day School, is Lily Song. She's actually an exchange student from China. She's been here for two years. She'll actually finish all four years here. She's being hosted by Holt and Randy Harris, which I think most of you know them. Do you want to speak? She says no. Very different pieces, as you see. And then our last, in first place, our winner from Gaston Day School, Robert Garrity, son of Robyn Rebecca Garrity. Obviously, so the theme, basically, he did not pick up his pen the entire time he did this. It's all one continuous piece, which is kind of a cool idea with Peace Through People, is to just, we're all connected all together. Do you want to tell a little bit about it? Since he is the winner, he should speak.
Well, I mean, the art, I just, basically, what she said, kind of intertwining everyone together and the, you know, different people and their similarities, and how you can kind of grow a net of people you know. But I'd also like to thank the city council for recognition, so, yeah, thank you.
How long to the thank you? How long did that, you said you started with the pen and you just started without taking?
Well, I didn't necessarily do it in one movement, but it took, it took me like two or three weeks, an hour a day, so it was, it was pretty big. It was hard to, I had to try a few times before I got it right, so.
Like everything in life, takes a few tries. Robert is obviously highly talented, as are the other artists, and we hope to hear some good news from International, because in the past, Sister Cities has gotten some winners from Gaston County, and those winners can win $1,000 if they win the top winning. So be on the lookout for some good news from that, but also, please go to the local library, the main branch, where we have all of the artwork up, so you can see just how diverse and talented our students truly are. And that's just one little piece of what we do for the community, so, thank you.
Okay, the last presentation is number three. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The Prudential Spirit of Community Awards Certificate of Recognition, Kerrigan McCurry, a presentation by Councilman Killagh.
So Kerrigan, are you here tonight? If you, no? Well, we'll just go ahead and, we, I don't know how many of you have seen the Gazette article a couple weeks back, but there was an article that was posted about a couple local students who are among North Carolina's top volunteers, and one of them is a Hunter Huss student, and that is Kerrigan McCurry. So she actually made the Gaston Gazette along with another individual. And it's really nice to see our young people making the paper for the differences they make in our community. And I do want to just go ahead and read a little bit about what the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards is and the honor that they have given her. And this goes on to say that Kerrigan McCurry of Gastonia was recently named one of the top two youth volunteers in North Carolina for 2016 in the 20th Annual Prudential Spirit of Community Awards. This is an extraordinary honor. More than 29,000 young people across the country participated in this year's program. As a state honoree, Kerrigan will receive a $1,000 award, an engraved silver medallion, and a trip to Washington, DC, April 30th through May 3rd, for a series of national recognition events. And the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards was created in 1959, I'm sorry, 1995 by Prudential Financial in partnership with the National Association of Secondary School Principals, in design to emphasize the importance of our national places, the importance that our nation places on service to others, and to encourage all young Americans to contribute to their communities. And I'm going to read the certificate that we will be giving to Kerrigan McCurry. And it says, "This certificate of recognition is awarded to Kerrigan McCurry, Hunter Huss High School, named North Carolina's Top High School Youth Volunteer of 2016 by the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards, presented this 19th day of April 2016 by the mayor and council of the city of Gastonia." And thank you very much, and I'm sure she's very proud, and we're very proud of her.
Councilman, thank you very, very much. Okay, moving along to the, there is no, no one signed up for public expression, but move to the item number one of the consent agenda, and the item is the final recording plat, the top of Hill's Phase Four, Map One. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. It is unanimous, thank you very much. Regular agenda, item two, public hearing, subject hearing involves rezoning approximately 13.92 acres from OM CD Medical Office Conditional District to C3 CD General Commercial Conditional District. The property is located at 3199 East Franklin Boulevard. The property is owned by Harold J. Weinberger and others. I would like to declare this public hearing open, and I would ask the city council, before you start, Jason, this, Mr. Jason Thompson, planning director for the city of Gastonia, before you start, may I ask the city attorney to give the rules of procedures that's been decided on this hearing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There has been some discussion between both the applicant and some of the joining property owners with regards to the procedure for tonight, so I will describe what has been discussed already, and then ask the council to approve that in the form of a motion as the rules for this public hearing tonight. The city staff, Mr. Thompson is going to make his presentation first, and then the applicant led by Mr. Walter Fields is going to make its presentation and will be allowed up to 25 minutes to speak, with five minutes reserved for rebuttal later. And then Mr. Doug Arthur, as spokesperson for the joining property owners, will be given 15 minutes to speak in his major presentation, and he has up to five minutes for his rebuttal. And Mr. Arthur and I spoke before the meeting, and if Mr. Arthur is not through with his presentation with the first 15 minutes, he's going to start using his five minutes rebuttal time, and each minute he uses will be subtracted from his rebuttal time, and the only person that causes a problem for is the city clerk. All right? So she's got to keep up with that. All right, then, next, Mr. Eric Elliott, as a spokesperson for the neighborhood, will be given 10 minutes to make his presentation. Then everyone else who signed up to speak will be allowed three minutes to speak. When I saw the sign-up sheet, Mr. Mayor, we only have a total of seven, which already included Mr. Fields, Mr. Arthur, and Mr. Elliott. So those three, next four people will have three minutes to speak, and it's my understanding that many of the residents of the neighborhood are in agreement that Mr. Arthur and Mr. Elliott represent them. So if your concerns have already been adequately addressed by Mr. Elliott and Mr. Arthur's, we encourage you to make it a value-added conversation and bring up additional information. And that is the procedure that has been hammered out prior to this meeting, Mr. Mayor, and I would ask the council, in the interest of the record, to make that in the form of a motion as the procedure for this hearing.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor? It is unanimous, thank you. It is unanimous, thank you. And that, of course, is number two in your agenda, which is numerous pages, I'm sure, exhibit two.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just have one thing I want to say, because I know a lot of the residents here, I've been in their neighborhood and stuff, and one thing I would like to suggest in a way of a motion is Pamela Street. Pamela Street has been a concern for a lot of the citizens there, thinking that we're going to make it go out to Franklin Boulevard. So I'd like to make this motion and ask you for your consideration, council. The Gastonia City Council does not plan any roadway extension of Pamela Street to connect with Franklin Boulevard, and further direct staff to pursue closing the unopened portion of the street right-of-way for Pamela Street and removing it from any city-maintained streets, plans, or maps. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second to the motion? Okay, discussion. Exhibit two-five shows Pamela where it is, right there, going right out to the blue area. Okay, any discussion at all?
There's some discussion.
Yes, sir.
Mayor and, I might as well...
There, how about that? Mayor and Councilman Gallagher, I don't know that I would oppose that, but I don't know enough about it. I mean, I don't, I don't even know, I haven't talked with any residents, I don't know from city staff what the intent of having that open in, I don't know, you're asking me to just blindly vote on something, and I can't do that right now, not tonight.
Todd, it's been a concern of theirs that one day we're going to go through their neighborhood and connect right out to Franklin Boulevard. We had spoken to Ed about it probably about two months ago, three months ago, is that right, Ed? We had asked you regarding, has the city have any plans on Pamela Street to go through? Have we ever discussed it? Has staff ever studied putting a street through there?
As you can see on some of the maps, it shows a cul-de-sac with some of that right-of-way going forward, and then it ends at the creek, but it's never been on a thoroughfare plan for virtually 40 years. I looked at a 1977 version, it wasn't there either. So it's never been part of our plan as a city council, any of the city councils, to ever extend Pamela as a street through there. There are some utilities, there's a sewer line there, there's some other utilities that will be there, but not ever to build a street and to actually have to construct that over the creek. You'd have to build it over DuHart Creek and take it into Franklin Boulevard.
It'd be tremendously expensive to do that.
And besides, it just helps them not have any fear that the city council is going to do something, you know, behind their back on it.
Ash, if this motion was made and approved, how long does that last? Till the next city council?
Well, no, I mean, if you close the right-of-way, and we've got a public hearing later on tonight, where we are going to permanently close an unopened street that was never opened and paved forever, and they're going to come in and they're going to file, probably, a plat to replat that property and do something else with it, and so we'll never be able to reopen that street.
Okay.
So it is, you know, to close an unopened paper street does have consequences. You can then do something else with the property. In this case, I believe, down there, the city owns some of that property, so it will just become part of that boundary that's around the creek.
What, may I ask you your advice? And that would be, would you not recommend in a normal procedural way that we do this as a separate item and have a public hearing on it?
Well, we will have to do that. We will have to bring it back to you.
Okay.
And I think, I think Councilman Gallagher is asking us to now initiate the procedure to close the unopened portion of the street, so we will have to come back and advertise a public hearing and have it.
Okay.
The same way we're doing later tonight in the agenda for King's Drive, which was never opened and paved.
Okay. I, I'm just a big procedure guy.
Yes, sir.
You know, I just don't like the, you know, like you, Todd, it's like, whoa, where'd this come from, you know? And it's not like we have any ill intent, and this sounds like a fine idea, but I just...
It won't have any legal effect until we do that public hearing and take the vote following that public hearing, and then all those maps and plans or everywhere it's noted that's causing concern can then be, you know, changed.
But if there's some trolls like that live along the creek there, and they want to come to the public hearing and speak against that, you know, at least we've informed them that they can, they can be here. But I'm being facetious, but the point is, is you don't do something without informing the full public. So, you know, so let's, let's do it right, and maybe I got your motion wrong, because my understanding of that was this was a finalized, you know, intent. And so if we're going to do this with the intent of a public hearing going forward, and then we've got it all straightened out, perfect.
Any other question?
I would, I would be apt to support what Councilman Curlin is suggesting. This is part of my ward, and I have heard this issue from several of our residents there, and I think I know how a lot of them feel about this, but I want to make 100% sure. So if there is a little bit of time involved, I'd love to meet with some of the residents of this area and actually understand 100% how they feel about this matter.
Okay, do we, there's a motion?
There's a motion and a second that's going to need to be voted on.
So at this point...
This is just direction to staff to bring it back to you as an advertised public hearing.
That's not what his motion says.
Well, I think...
Do I have to amend it to say that we're going to...
If he's willing to amend his motion that it's...
To have it for a public hearing. I do amend it so it does say "public hearing" that we will have staff look at it to make sure that we do not plan any roadway extension on Pamela Street to connect with Franklin Boulevard, and further direct staff to pursue closing the unopened portion of the street right-of-way for Pamela Street and removing it from any city-maintained street plans or maps.
Porter made the, Councilman McIntyre made the second.
A second, that'll be fine.
Second, okay. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Okay. Okay, Jason.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you, good evening. I'd like to begin staff's presentation by calling your attention to the rezoning map that is included in your agenda and should be on the screen here in just a second. This request for rezoning is for a roughly 14-acre, almost 14-acre parcel, south side of Franklin Boulevard there, along DuHart Creek. It's currently zoned, the Medical Office Conditional District, and that's tied to a specific development plan. I have some of those details available, I believe those are in your agenda packet as well, if you have any questions about that. The request by the applicant is to change the zoning designation to the C3 or General Commercial Conditional District, which would also be tied to a development plan and a number of conditions. The development plan in your agenda packet now on the, on the screen details what the proposed development would look like, where the buildings would be located. You see that there are two, two, I would call, primary access points at existing signalized intersections, and then also a right-in, right-out configuration there in roughly the center of the proposed developed site. The proposal here is for up to 90,000 square feet of retail, split amongst multiple buildings to be placed on the site. As you can see in the conditions included in the staff report, and there are a number of them, I'll try to hit some of the high points on those, the applicant is limiting some of, some normally allowed uses under C3 as a condition of the rezoning. This property is also subject to a previously put in place three-party agreement regarding, regarding some roadway improvements, and we can get into some of those details if we, if we need to also. But primarily, that involves building an additional lane in Franklin Boulevard there heading eastbound. This petition for rezoning is completely consistent with that previously put in place agreement. Some of the other notable, notable elements here revolve around, you know, some of the, some of the details about signage and restrictions on lighting and things of those nature, and that's all included in your agenda here. The, the proposal that is before you for a commercial development is inconsistent because it is a commercial development proposal with the city's comprehensive plan, which indicates residential for this property. So that, that inconsistency factors into staff's recommendation on this item. If this rezoning were to be approved tonight, it would allow for the development of that property, as you see it depicted on that site plan, and consistent with all the written zoning conditions and/or any additional conditions, if the applicant were to agree to any tonight, those would also get included in that, in that final approval. But again, it is, this proposal is inconsistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and it also represents a more intense style of development that then is currently approved under the existing zoning. That existing zoning designation that sits on the property right now was put in place in 2006. It's for a senior housing development, so it'd be units in two buildings. Obviously, the property sits there now wooded and undeveloped, but that zoning designation stays in place unless it gets changed by either the Planning Commission or the city council. At the March 3rd meeting, the Planning Commission voted 5-2 on a motion to deny the rezoning request. Due to the fact that that 5-2 vote wasn't a 75, didn't represent a 75% majority of those voting, this item per the city's ordinance was automatically appealed to the city council here tonight. It was noted that there are a number of folks signed up to speak tonight. I would also point out that Commissioner Jim Stewart from the Planning Commission is present, if you had any questions about the Planning Commission's vote and discussion that night, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Jason Wall designed prior to 2006 when it was rezoned into residential.
Bear with me one second. It is not indicated in the materials that I have in front of me right now, but I can get that question answered for you.
I believe it's residential. I believe it's residential.
It was residential before?
Yeah, yes.
Prior to 2006.
Thank you, Jason, for being here, for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Has there, I didn't, I didn't really see anything in our packet here to address this, but has there ever been any engineering studies done for that area based on the flood plain in the creek and the water runoff from the highway and the shopping center across the street? Is there any, is there any data collected for, for any of that?
What sort of data in particular?
I mean, as far, has there ever been a study done just for looking at, at that particular area for the effects of the stormwater off the highway and also that's coming in from the Franklin Square?
I think city engineer Rusty Boss should be able to answer that.
Thank you.
There hasn't been a, a specific study per se looking at that area. We have done a lot of work around that. Every two or three years or so, we go and cross-section the creek through there and see if we can see the creek changing any. It has a little. When the Franklin Square was developed, there were a lot of flood studies that were involved at that time with the runoff coming from Franklin Square. So, so there have been a few, but not directly with this rezoning case.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
That was pretty much the gist of my question, was based, based on this rezoning request, was there any engineering work done, taken into account what we're looking at on paper?
And in all honesty, that type of thing happens later on with the site plan submittal through the TRC process and the reviews that happened then. So that, that would happen if, if this were approved and was developed.
Thank you, Rusty.
Dr. Curlin, and then Mr. Killop.
Jason, in the 2006 plan, there was a lot of conversations at the time about water runoff, pervious pavement surfaces. It seemed like at that time the developer was agreeable to and worked with the city staff on trying to mitigate some of the natural runoff that would come from the property through those kinds of techniques. Was any of that discussed with this proposal and with this developer in terms of trying to parallel those similar types of tools or techniques to address those concerns?
We did have conversations with the applicant about any willingness to do any measures above and beyond with regard to stormwater runoff. That 2006 approval actually has a condition written in there that requires a portion, or if it were developed, to develop as those senior apartments, it would require a portion of the parking lot to be pervious pavement. The applicant in this case has agreed with regard to the way detention is handled per the city ordinance. Detention is required to handle the two and 10-year storms, and the applicant has actually agreed to the 25-year as well. So those conversations were had, and that, that was the outcome of it.
Thank you.
This is a, sort of pigging back on Councilman Dave Humphrey's question a few minutes ago, and maybe Rusty might have an answer to this, if you're not aware, but I am wondering if there has ever been any evidence, or if anybody is aware of any contaminants that might be in that soil, partially due to all the runoff and the debris that frequently floods those neighborhoods?
I am not aware of any information to that effect.
Is that something that we should, that we should be aware of? I mean, I, I would like to know if there's any contamination in that soil before there's any movement forward with any kind of development whatsoever. I think that's probably wise. That's just, that's just my opinion.
Okay, any other questions of Jason? Any questions of Mr. Stewart before we get off the planning department? Spokesman for the Planning Commission, any questions?
Just one quick comment, kind of based on what Robert said. If there are contaminants, wouldn't that be up to the developer to discover? I mean, this is private property, so the city's not going to go on and test private property and say, oh, you have contaminants. That would be up to the developer, I would think.
I would actually think the, the bigger concern would be soil compaction studies and core borings and things like that, because it's a low-lying area, it's been, you know, an area that's, you know, been disturbed to some degree years ago, and I, I'm sure the developer or the contractor would be sure to have all kinds of core samplings done before they would start to, you know, put down any pavement or any slabs or anything like that.
If it is contaminated, you know, like Robert said, you'd want to know that, but they, that's part of the process before they build.
I would like to hear what the Planning Commission, the reason for their vote the way they did, if you don't mind, Mr. Stewart?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm Jim Stewart. This will be my fourth year, I'm coming toward the end of that, on the Planning Commission. It's been rather enlightening. I can tell you that we voted 5 to 2. I voted against it, but not because I really wanted to. This is a real problem for me, because I believe that people should have the right to develop their property, but at the same time, I feel like we don't need to hurt the neighbors who are on the property. It's a real tough problem to handle. But we never involved in that process of trying to do any creative thinking or have any creative leaders step up to say, we need to address this problem. Do we take property off the tax rolls when we continue to deny them use of their property? Maybe we should. I want to pass this around, if you would, if you could hand those around to the council members. members. When I came on the Planning Commission, I was given a little booklet about what our duties are, and I've highlighted those on the front page of this, which you'll see in just a second. We are never involved in the planning process. Maybe the week before or like a Friday or Monday, we get a packet in the mail, or it's brought by our office or whatever, and we see what's going on, but we have no input or any conversation about it unless it's among ourselves. If you'll look down through this, we have never done any of the things that we're charged with except H, to review and approve preliminary subdivision plaits. We're charged by this to prepare and recommend planning and recommendations. A lot of things here that never take place. In the four years I've been on now, this has not occurred. So, I'm thinking that the process is broken. What happens is, we wind up being in between the council and the citizens. That's wrong, and we have a situation where everybody's at odds with each other. We need some creativity, some creative thinking, some creative leadership to help come together as a community to solve these problems. I'm for the development, but yet I'm not for hurting the people that live behind it. You know, I look at Sugar Creek over in Charlotte. When I worked there way back, it's been a long time, John, but there was an office building down on, I think it's King's Drive, and it had double Ts over the creek. The creek was really pitiful. Now, if you go over there, it's a combination of flood control, walking and bicycle trails, sitting areas along the creek area. I've spent a lot of time going over there, looking at this property and looking at the floodplain that goes down through there. This is not just a problem for Gastonia. It's a problem from that area all the way to Cramerton. That creek goes all the way to there, and as you see, we have flooding in Cramerton all the time. This is a multi-city problem and a county problem. We need to address it that way. We need some creative leadership to come in and get a hold of these kind of things, not just bring it before the Planning Commission, say, "What do y'all think?" You know, "The staff recommends against," or "The staff doesn't recommend," or whatever. That's not the best way to handle these things. This has been a process that's been going on for a long time. I took a map and I charted out where all the different creeks and streams went. I've spent time driving those places, going down into the floodplain areas and looking at it. That's an enormous amount of land back there. There should be some ability to develop a portion of that without hurting the neighbors behind it. Somehow, that needs to happen. I'm for protecting the neighbors, but I'm also for the development, so it's a real tough thing for me. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart, was that the consensus opinion of the other four members of the commission who voted with you that night?
I think some of the other members would like to see the development, but they would like to see something happen, you know, just like you mentioned, the studies. There needs to be something done with that. We can't continually not develop property just because we say we can't. Of course, the Corps of Engineers are involved and the state, all of that, so there's a lot of things, a lot of issues to resolve to get things done like that, but other people do it. You went down to Greenville to look at the downtown areas. What have they done with their creek areas through the town? They've done something with it, but they continue to develop downtown. The water goes somewhere. Same way with Charlotte. That whole area that used to be the old Charlottetown Mall has developed rapidly over a period of time, and they still work to solve their problems. That's part of our tax base. That's part of the infrastructure that we need to pay attention to, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions of Jason? We're going to move along. Come back, okay? Thank you, sir. Number two, on the rules, Mr. Fields, I think you're next to make your presentation. You're allowed up to 25 minutes, with five minutes for about. While he's doing that, this is Mr. Walter Fields of South Boulevard, Charlotte, and representing the applicant.
Mayor, thank you very much, Mayor, and members of council, and Mr. City Manager and Mr. City Attorney and Madam Clerk. I'm Walter Fields, 1919 South Boulevard, Suite 101 in Charlotte, and I'm pleased to be here tonight representing Mount Castle Corporation. Mr. William Roller from Mount Castle has come over the mountains tonight to be with us, and if I get into deep, I hope he can throw me a lifeline. And I want to thank Councilmember Gallagher, right out of the box, for putting the Pamela Street issue to bed because as part of this conversation and my meetings and conversations with some of the folks in the room here tonight, I heard that as an issue that was coming up, and it related back to would this zoning case be the trigger for that street to be constructed? So, thank you very much for taking that off the table, and I'm glad that that matter has been dealt with. And also to Mr. Stewart, who just spoke about the Planning Commission's discussion because this is a challenging case. It's a challenging piece of property for someone trying to develop it. It's got quite a history in the community, which I have spent some time trying to understand. I'm a city planner. I've worked for 25 years in local governments, and I have been operating my own business for a number of years since then, trying to help people through the development process, mostly in Charlotte, but in Gastonia. I've done some work here before. Some of you, Mr. Munn, may remember, I worked as part of a consultant team, and we actually did a comprehensive plan for Gaston County back around 2000 or 2001. So, I enjoy coming here and I enjoy being a part of your process. The piece of property that we're here to talk about tonight is part of what was a much larger tract owned by the Lineberger family for years and years and years, and has been a piece which has been cussed and discussed, near as I can tell, on many prior occasions. As Jason said in his presentation, it's about 14 acres. It's part of, it's the remainder of a tract that used to include about 28 additional acres, which I believe two or three years ago was actually deeded to the city of Gastonia. As Mr. Stewart pointed out, an opportunity might indeed be there for some sort of trails or greenway or flood control projects that would benefit the residents nearby as well as the remainder of the folks in that drainage basin, which is rather significant. The driver behind this rezoning is Academy Sports, and on the site plan that Jason showed you, and I think may still be on a screen somewhere, it is the larger building of the three on the site. It's important for me to take a moment and talk about the fact that we show the whole site, but we have, but the driver is Academy Sports. And with regard to the next building down and the one even smaller than that, there are not specific tenants or folks signed up at this point in time for those buildings. But, one of the first questions that we had to answer with Jason and Jana and the other members of the city staff was, should we bring in just part of the site, just the part that Academy Sports wanted to acquire for their building and parking and so forth, and then leave the rest, which in my mind, from a planner, leaves a lot of unanswered questions? What happens to that, and how do you connect, and what about grading, and all those sorts of things? Or bring the whole thing in, recognizing that if there were questions about what goes in that middle building, we couldn't be very specific. We think it might be a great spot for a small grocery store, maybe a specialty grocer, but there is not one at the table. But, we've gone ahead and laid the site out with both internal circulation, screening, and all the commitments that we're making as part of this process, as well as improvements to Franklin Boulevard that tie back to something that happened a number of years ago. I've looked at the zoning map, and I printed it out and taped it together, and from, literally from end to end, with only one or two exceptions, the entire frontage of Franklin Boulevard of the city of Gastonia is zoned for one non-residential use or the other, principally highway-type businesses and some industrial land out towards the west end of the street. And I also went and looked at the plan, the Franklin Boulevard corridor study that was done not all that long ago, and this is called, this area is called the Eastern Gateway. And as Jason pointed out in his presentation, the land use plan shows that as some sort of open space or something. It's not well-defined, but it also shows that it's within the quarter-mile walking distance of the center at Franklin Square, which in the corridor plan is contemplated to be the Eastern Gateway, and that would intensify in years to come. With the transportation improvements that are part of this development proposal, which may very well include pedestrian enhancements so people can get back and forth across Franklin Boulevard, it makes this site even more convenient to be part of that Eastern Gateway. This site, despite all of that, is what it is. It's a location on a major thoroughfare, Federal Aid Primary Highway, US 74. It is part of a regional commercial center, not just this one piece by itself, but Franklin Square across the street and the developments that have taken place up and down this corridor from the mall to the city limit line to the east, all define this as a regional location, and there are regional-scale businesses here. It makes imminent sense to somebody like Academy Sports to be part of that regional This corridor and the development that's here is a major economic engine for the city of Gastonia and Gaston County. I don't know how many jobs are included in the uses up and down this portion of the street. How many have come along since 1988, when Franklin Square was originally approved, and the development that has flowed from that over the years, but I expect it's significant. As a planner, I look at this area and say, "This is a logical location for some sort of non-residential development." It is probably not a location for single-family. It's a dubious location for multifamily because of the property, the 14 acres and the shape of the 14 acres makes it very difficult to get the sort of yield that most multifamily developers would look for. This council or previous council did approve a development there for a form of multifamily housing, which was age-restricted senior housing, and Councilmember Curlin asked a question about impervious cover and porous pavement, so on and so forth. We did, in fact, discuss that, and I went beyond just a conversation with the staff and spoke to the folks in Charlotte that created that site plan. And I asked them, sort of in a straight-up fashion, "Do you think that plan could have actually been built the way it was drawn and with the conditions that were put on the plan?" And their response was, "Probably not." They characterized the discussions as being, trying to agree to as many things as possible as part of the conversation, and the porous pavement was part of that conversation. We chose to address it a different way, by stepping up a notch in terms of the water being detained and controlled on the property before it's released into the drainage system. I really don't think porous pavement works very well with clay soils, which we seem to have a lot of in this part of North Carolina. So, as a practical matter, it sounds great, and it's really kind of sexy, and it's all over the place in Florida, but you don't find too many examples of it working very well in this part of the country, but we did take that into account. From the standpoint of the site plan itself, what we have tried to do, and this is in conjunction with numerous conversations with Mr. Arthurs and Eric and other folks that came to our community meeting, with a lot of time spent with the planning director and his staff and Mr. Munn and other members of the city staff, has come up with a plan which we don't believe is terribly intense. Jason characterized it that way, based on, I believe, the fact that there's larger parking fields than were on the senior housing plan, but in terms of floor area, it's less than half of the amount of floor area that was approved as part of the zoning that's currently on the property. We were charged with trying to work through issues that we thought might come up, and one of those things was, if you just go for the straight C3 zoning, there's a lot of stuff there that people might not like. And so, we went through that list and put together an exclusion list and a series of uses that would not be permitted on the property. And we believe that that list is the sort of thing that helps people get a more comfortable feeling about what's going there, and, you know, car dealers and body shops and things like that would not ever be permitted there. The road improvements that Jason mentioned were part of a three-party agreement that dates back, I think, to about 1988 and was reaffirmed again just a few years ago. It actually was discussed in 1988 at the July zoning hearing before the City Council on the original approval of the zoning, which is what is now Franklin Square. And there's conversations in the minutes that talk about the city's desire, if there's going to be this much development in this area, to make sure that the thoroughfare improvements are adequate to accommodate that traffic. There was concern about the mall up the street and people's traffic getting to the hospital, and so as part of the rezoning that put Franklin Square in place, an agreement was struck between the property owners and the city and NCDOT to make improvements as those sites developed. And that did occur. As Franklin Square developed, improvements were made on that side of the street, not the same improvements that we would be making because the city's standards, I think, have been upped a little bit since then. But, it's clear from reading those minutes that it was contemplated that when the time was right and there was a specific development plan proposed for the south side of Franklin Boulevard, across the street from Franklin Square, that that would be the appropriate time to consider it. And so, in concert with your staff and with NCDOT, all of those agreements have carried forward and will be in place, put in place as part of the development of this site, and then some, because the earlier developments across the street don't have the same sort of sidewalk configuration that is now a community expectation in Gastonia that we'll be installing as part of this development. We were asked to take a look at some of the specific performance standards that had been approved as part of the prior plan or the plan that's currently in place, limits on grading, how you service the site, that sort of thing. We pulled many of those standards out and brought them forward and included those in this plan. Some of those were a really good idea. Some of them were unique to a residential development and just didn't make sense on a site like this, but we also added some additional requirements dealing with servicing and when people can come and go to service the property and maintain the parking lots and so on and so forth, pick up the dumpsters, that sort of thing, to make sure that it was done during the normal course of a normal business day as a specific nod to the folks that live close by about their concerns about noise from the site, no outdoor speakers, nothing like that. So, we've, again, tried to glean people's concerns and put those in place. As I mentioned, we have committed to the additional stormwater treatment. We talked to the city engineer about this, and Jason, in fact, was the one who challenged us to go back to our engineer and say, "Can't you do one better? Can't you up the standard?" And particularly in view of the fact that the current plan had some standards in it that sort of were an attempt to try to do that, and our concern was that we thought those weren't actually practical. We've put something in place that we know is practical and would be reviewed as part of the normal development process, under the normal permitting process in the city of Gastonia. We're all familiar with the site and the location and where the community is. We know that leaves fall off the trees in the fall and they come back in the spring, and even though there's a significant portion of land between the edge of our property, the 14 acres, and the rear property lines of the folks that adjoin the creek, and that's all now belongs to the city of Gastonia, that we still wanted to make sure that we could do what we could to try to minimize the impact. We actually engaged the services of a lighting engineer and did a photogrammetric study of the site and selected the light types and the height of the light fixtures to limit light leaving the site at the property line, basically to zero-foot candles. The only exception to that is in the front portion of the site where we'd be in a driveway location, and you really want to be a little more light there so people can see how to come and go safely, particularly if there's pedestrians crossing at that signalized intersection. I have that lighting study with me if somebody would like to see it. It's way over my head, but it is something that we translated into development restrictions on the site. I'm aware of, and I think everybody is aware... I'm aware of, and I think everybody is aware of, flooding in Duarts Creek. And it's not a new topic. It is something that I was acquainted with early on, when I met with the community. Eric brought me photographs that showed me a lot of flooding in that area. In fact, some of them, I think, on the occasion of our meeting, were not all that old. And we recognize that. None of our development touches the floodplain, number one. And I believe that was a conversation that occurred in 1988 as well. There was concerns about the floodplain and how it would be impacted on the other side of Franklin Boulevard. So none of our development is in the floodplain. All of that land now belongs to the City of Gastonia. There's a little bit of land that we have outside the floodplain, and we'll be doing some screening in there, and some of our water quality detention is in that area, but we're not touching the floodplain. If we did, Gastonia's got one of the most stringent ordinances that I'm aware of, where there's a requirement for zero rise in the floodplain. And that takes an action on the part of the planning board and the city council to even consider doing that. But we are not touching the floodplain, and so we don't believe that that is something that we're going to contribute to. Secondly, the drainage basin for Duarts Creek, when it's down to the point where it's at the bottom edge of our site, is 1,623 acres. We're 14 acres out of that 1,623 acres, which represents .09% of the floodplain. I think you heard in some earlier conversations that a lot of the development that's north and west of us, that was developed in a different time, where there wasn't the same sort of requirements as there are now, are the major contributors to the issues that the fine folks in the community that are here tonight have been dealing with for years. If you never touch this site, if you never put a shovel in it anywhere, that doesn't change that condition. We are a minuscule portion of the floodplain, and we'll be developing to a higher standard than anybody else above us, to my knowledge, has developed to. So again, trying to be responsive to these concerns. I'd like to show you an illustration that I put together. I didn't show this at the planning board meeting, because I only had 20 minutes, and y'all have given me an additional five. So I feel like I'd like to show it to you, and I hope that the TV camera can pick it up. Because one of the things that we've been wrestling with is to how to illustrate the relationship between the residential lots and houses that adjoin us, that adjoin the city's property, which then adjoins our site, and the development that we're proposing. So if you'll allow me. I'm not any good with one of these Rambo machines, or whatever you call it over here, so I'm the old-fashioned cardboard and colored pencil guy. What you see there are cross-sections that are cut through our site. We submitted those to-
We also have them here, too.
Good, thank you. We submitted those because we thought they would be useful in trying to illustrate proximity and elevation. They are horizontally accurate, and they are vertically accurate in terms of scale. So when you look at them, and they were done by an engineer, so instead of having numbers that you and I might be able to read, they're from a station point. What I did was, I cut out a piece of green paper that's the length of a football field, including the end zones. And what I like to do is pin that up on the map to let you see, without having to get out a ruler, without having to get down and read the fine print, what that represents in terms of separation between the building and the parking that we're proposing as part of this development and the houses nearby. You can see it in the exhibit that you have in front of you. And what that green bar represents, as I said, is the length of a football field plus the end zones. I have been in the community and stood and looked across this property and looked at Franklin Boulevard. And when you're sitting in the neighborhood, it looks like it's pretty close. I'm not going to dispute that with anybody. But as a practical matter, there is a significant amount of separation between the two. But because there's a sewer easement there, where the city doesn't allow trees to grow, and because the trees that are there are deciduous, we went an extra step and built some additional screening along the parking lot edge, put in additional landscaping at the headlight level along the parking lot edge, and any place where a car would circulate and might actually point a headlight across towards the city's property and into the community, specifically to screen mobility vehicles moving around on the site when the leaves are off the trees. And we were challenged by the staff after we showed them the first version of that to actually go back and do more. And we went back and did more. And all of that is committed to on the plan. As I mentioned earlier, we also dealt with a lighting consultant to make sure that the light that leaves the site is very, very limited, and that's measured at the property line, not measured over across the creek, but at the property line. Will it be possible to tell that there's a building there with lights on at night? Yes. Will the parking lot lights be turned off at night after the business is closed, except those necessary for security purposes? Yes. So again, we've tried to understand the concerns that we've heard, some of which we can't address because they're larger than this one particular development. But those that we can't address, we believe we have. Jason, in his report, says that this complies with your UDO requirements, design requirements, and everything else, which we struggled with, quite frankly, because it was a challenge to do, but our architects were able to do it. There's one thing I want to point out in the staff analysis, and I mention this to the planning board, too. You have to adopt a statement of consistency when you take an action on a rezoning. No matter what your action is, it's to be accompanied by a statement of consistency. And Jason has prepared one that's at the end of his staff analysis, and it's based on his recommendation that he believes that this petition should be denied. He's very forthright in pointing out that it's inconsistent with the plan. I don't dispute that. As a planner, I think the time may have come to look at whether or not this, it is an appropriate time to develop this property, to make it part of this regional center, to create some jobs and create some tax base and create sales tax revenues for the city and the county. And I would propose for you to consider the following. Instead of adopting a statement that says it's inconsistent with the plan and therefore is denied, that it would say something like this, that this development is not consistent with the plan, but is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. It complies with all applicable codes and ordinances, which is always a basic standard for any development going through a process like this. It's a logical use for the site because it's on a major thoroughfare. It's part of a regional commercial center that serves not only the citizens of Gastonia but the surrounding area. It results in improvements to Franklin Boulevard that were agreed upon years and years and years ago, but have been waited on by the city for this property to develop. And in 1988, in the planning director's report at the time, it said, until there is a specific development plan with a site plan that can be reviewed, this southern side shouldn't be considered. That plan is before you. It includes limits on the activities that can take place on the site. It includes limits on lighting. It includes additional limits on services and additional landscaping. It adds to the tax base by virtue of the new construction. It adds employment opportunities to the community, and we can always use those. And it creates the ability to add sales tax revenues. You don't have that in front of you, but as you consider your action on this petition after you've heard all the discussion tonight, I would ask you to think about a positive statement in support of this for the reasons that I've listed, and based on the information that we've shown and the commitments made by Mountcastle on part of this plan. We appreciate their opportunity to be here tonight. I want to thank, again, your city staff, and also the people that we have been in contact with in the community. Everything has been very straightforward, above-board. Everybody's been polite. We've had good conversations. We didn't always agree, but I respect them and their opinions, and I hope they respect ours. Thank you, again, for the opportunity, and I'll be happy to stand for any questions if you have them for me now or later.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fields. Yes, sir, Dr.
Mr. Fields, I've got one question of clarification. You made a comment earlier, and you referred to less than half the floor area. Could you first speak a little bit more to what you mean by that?
Yes, sir. If I recall, and maybe Jason will correct me, if I recall, the total floor area in the two-four-story buildings that are currently approved for the site, even though have not been and will unlikely likely ever be built, was about 200,000 square feet. Our total development on this site for 14 acres is about 90,000 square feet. If you're looking at it purely from a retail standpoint, a good number to work with for retail is 8,000 to 10,000 square feet per acre. So we're significantly less intense even than the development across the street. My characterization was that, in Jason's report, he referred to this as a more intensive development. Measured in terms of the amount of land that is covered, he is correct. Measured in terms of floor area on the site, which is another way that I think about intensity, we are a much less intense development.
So just to clarify that a little bit more, the footprint for the existing zoning is two 27,000-square-foot pads. So that's 54,000 square feet of footprint. And what you're proposing is 90,000 square feet of footprint. So if you're talking about the actual amount of land that's being consumed or trees removed or whatever, I understand what you're saying when you're talking about floor area.
Uh huh.
Of course, we're all talking about a, the other was a residential development of, you know, senior 55-plus housing in which there'd be significantly less vehicles in and out of that space. So, I mean, I want you to make that comparison, but I want it to go on the record to be clarified that you're referring to floor area, and I want, you know, the public to understand that, you know, footprint is another piece of the pie that needs to be measured, too.
You are absolutely correct, and I dispute nothing that you said. If you take your 57,000 feet of footprint and then multiply that times four, you get a much larger amount of floor area. It's just another measure of intensity. Your characterization of the ground floor is absolutely correct. We have more ground floor development on this site, and more of the site is used for parking. So in one way, it's more intense; in another way, arguably, it's less intense. It's a different plan. It's for a different purpose, and it's going to have different characteristics. You're exactly right, though.
Okay, any others? Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Be calling on Mr. Next under the procedure. Mr. Doug Arthur, spokesperson in opposition to the rezoning. 20 minutes. 15 to 20 minutes, I believe.
Mr. Mayor, if what we can do is set the timer for 15 minutes, and then, remember, time answering questions doesn't count towards the limit. If the city clerk's got the ability to pause that while he's answering questions, and then, when he goes, if he goes over 15, we're going to try to keep track of the minutes, and then his rebuttal at the end will subtract that. Okay? I'm going over this in part for the clerk, because we are on opposite sides of the room, and we've got a new clerk, and I want to make sure she understands how this works, because she turned the light on Mr. Fields a while ago when he was answering a question, and it doesn't go on until his rebuttal, when he comes back up. The same for Mr. Arthur's, but we're going to have to keep up with his time if he goes over this first 15 minutes. Okay?
Is that it? Is that it? Okay, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Doug Arthur's, 420 East Long Avenue, Gastonia, North Carolina. I represent the property owners in Gardner Park, Gardner Woods, and Yoho Acres. I have four or five times that this property has been brought up for zoning. I think I had hair the first time.
Move along.
Brother Bridgen can understand that. I want to give you a history about this rezoning. And it's very important, the history about this rezoning, because it's, this is probably the most rezoned parcel, or attempted to be rezoned parcel, in the city limits of Gastonia. It started in 1974, when the Leinberger family, a petition to rezon 450 acres, all of it commercial. That was turned down. And then in July of 1988, there was a petition to rezon the property north of Franklin to start Franklin Square. And that was before the Planning Commission on July 14, 1988. That was the property that started Franklin Square. My associate Travis Page has handed you two pieces of documents, one I'm fixing or for two, because this is where the rub starts. The rub starts in 1988 because the attorney hired for the Leinberger family, Mr. Bailey Patrick Jr., presented the case for the rezoning to allow Franklin Square to go forward. And the question came up, what do you do about the south part of Franklin Square, Franklin Boulevard? Mr. Earl Holt, who has led the charge fighting this, unfortunately had a stroke and was unable to tend to ninety, he's in rehabilitation, but he has fought this tooth and nail. If you'll look at page four of the handout of the minutes of the Planning Commission, Gastonia Planning Commission of July 14, 1988, you'll see where I've highlighted for you that Mr. Holt asked what would be in store for the future property on the south side of Franklin. And in order to encourage the rezoning to be approved, Mr. Patrick said, if there was any development of this property, it would be O&amp;I type, office and institutional, not commercial. Development or multifamily, Mr. Patrick stated, before this property would be developed, they would meet with the neighborhood and share conditional site plan. Mr. Patrick stated he does not see any type of rezoning for this property that does not recognize the concerns of the neighborhood, and not only recognize, but by way of conditional plan guarantee, that the commitments and concerns of Mr. Holt has and the neighbors would have to be resolved. Mr. Holt, in his infinite wisdom, asked that those comments be made a part of the record, the minutes, and they were. And you've got them, and that's the history. In 1988, the family that owned this property that's before you made a promise to the neighborhood, we won't ask for commercial if you'll give us commercial on the north. Well, guess what? In 1991, they came and asked the Gastonia City Council to rezon it commercial, this same parcel we're here about tonight. It was rejected. In 1995, the Gastonia City Council, on July 18, 1985, adopted City Vision 2010. That was comprehensive, first comprehensive plan adopted by the city council. There's a large mapping here, I'm not going to take it out, but this property was listed as residential in 1995. This was considered by the Planning Commission, the city council, everyone. This property is to remain residential. 1997, two years later, six years after the one denial, here comes another representative for the Leinberger family asking once again for commercial development on this property. Once again, city council denied it. That's five times it's been considered, five times it's been rejected. Number six, from 2001 to 2002, a petition went through the Planning Commission and the council. I opposed, helped oppose that. Once again, it was denied, I think unanimously. I don't recall for sure. I don't recall for sure. So, that's number six. It's been, this property has been discussed and decided by a council or a planning commission and every time it's been denied that this is proper for commercial development. Boom, 2006, we get another proposal. This time, it's for a senior residence development. And I'm going to put on the Elmo for you, a copy of that. If you'll see, something's curious about this, by the way. The engineer that-
They were nice enough. We have, we have talked.
I understand. But what I want to point out about that is, the engineer that drew that plan said there was 11.5 acres not in the floodplain. Well, mysteriously, since that plan was drawn and the one you've got has been presented to you, there's 13.75 acres not in the floodplain. I don't know where the other two and a half acres came from, but y'all might want to ask Mr. Fields that. That's a serious question. Where did that, why did this engineer say there's eleven and a half and the other one said something else? There's also, I don't know if you've got any plan, but that's, that's the proposed elevations for that. But what that shows is, there's a use for this property that's not commercial. And what Mr. Fields said should be done was done in 2006. There was a give and take negotiation and what the Leinberger family promised in 1988, they agreed to in 2006. We'll let this develop as residential and it was multifamily. And it was designed in such a way that protected the neighborhood. If you look at this site plan that's being presented tonight, it exposes the entire parking area to the neighborhood. The other one sheltered completely by the alignment of the buildings. And it put the parking lot where it's not on the neighbors. So, it's still possible. In fact, there's a development of senior housing in Belmont, right off Wilkinson Boulevard, owned by the Sisters of Mercy. It could be the same type of entrance into this property as the Sisters of Mercy's property and have a senior housing development. Perfect situation. This property can be developed, but it shouldn't be developed in the most intense commercial way possible. There was an eighth time that this property was considered. And that was when the 2025 Comprehensive Plan was adopted. That was done on May the 17th, 2011. Mr. Curlin, Dr. Curlin, I apologize. You voted for this plan. You were on this council. This plan says that this property will remain residential. It's circled and read there. It was considered by the Planning Commission, the council, the planning director. Once again, this property remains residential. That's the deal. It's in a sensitive area for flooding. That's what's supposed to happen with this property. In fact, the gateway area that Mr. Fields talks about does show that hopefully someday that will only be, that's in this 2025 Comprehensive Plan, that this area may, may end up being open space, which would be nice, because there's really not any on Franklin Boulevard. The other area that's residential is restricted by private restrictive covenants. That's why it was never commercially developed. This was never commercially developed because there was an agreement not to by the Leinberger family and their representative. But they come here tonight not wanting to keep their word. I'm asking you to make them and I'm asking you to do what every other council's done nine previous times. Vote that this is not appropriate for commercial development. The current request, Mr. Page, you'll bring those around for me. First time it was submitted, and I've got these on the big map because you can't read those little ones. The first time it was submitted, it showed a retaining wall from here to here. What's in your packet doesn't show but a portion of that wall here and here and here. What's also missing from the ones on your, in your packet is there's no showing them how high that wall is. It's on here. They took it off so you wouldn't see it. It starts right here. 14 feet of wall means they've got 14 feet of fill dirt behind it. 12 feet of wall, they've got 12 feet to fill behind it. 10 feet of wall, they've got 10 foot of fill dirt to fill behind it. 6 feet of wall, more fill dirt. How many thousands of trucks is it going to take to fill in that dirt? We don't know, but they sure took it off their plan so you couldn't ask them about They also did a traffic study that said this intense development will have no effect. The other piece of paper I had Mr. Page hand up to you shows the intensity of this use. The 64,000 square foot building is labeled for academy sports. And then next to it, and what was told at the Planning Commission was, all the groceries going in there. That plan I've given you was submitted to the city by Mr. Fields. I'm running short, so I'm going to jump to what this Comprehensive Plan says. And I'm going to put it on the Elmo, but I'm going to read it to you. It says neighborhoods. Neighborhoods are the building blocks of overall community development. Make no mistake, neighborhoods do not become or remain healthy by accident. Creating a city of healthy, sustainable neighborhoods takes a conscious proactive decision by community leaders, government, and private sector partners. This neighbor, these neighborhoods, Gardner Park, Gardner Woods, have developed and have continued to develop and grown and been strong because they're protected. Mount Castle's coming here from Tennessee saying, let's don't protect the neighbors anymore. Let's go back on the Leinberger family word and let's put the most intense development we can backed up to a floodplain with 14 feet of wall. Guess what happened to the wall behind Walgreens? It collapsed. It wasn't in the floodplain. They're not in the floodplain, but where's all that water going to go when the water rises? It's not going on them, they've got a wall. It's going in the neighborhood. And what cooperation do we have? I'm going to read you an email from Janet McMakin to Mr. Fields. Miss McMakin sent him and asked him about stormwater. Has there been any consideration given to underground stormwater BPMs to meet Phase Two requirements? And his response was, underground stormwater detention would allow more existing trees to remain on the site underground. Detention that meets Phase Two requirements is about 100,000 an acre and does not necessarily save trees. Then they asked something else. Miss McMakin asked another question about exceeding the requirements of the, of the storm detention. His first response, he said, now we've agreed to a 25-year rain study, but his first response to Miss McMakin is, if we meet the city's flood ordinance, why would we be asked to do more? Based on what? To what standard? That was his response to staff. I tell you, that's the attitude we're dealing with and that's what's going to have to be put up with by the neighbors. And I'm going to cut this short because I want to have rebuttal time, but I do want to show you one thing about this. Football field, the creek's not shown in there and neither is the sewer. That easement doesn't have trees on it. That's a deceptive representation to you. There's a gap of 40 or 50 feet in there that doesn't have trees. I'll speak after they let me. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer.
Mr. Pierceall?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, question?
Yes, Mr. Arthur's. You mentioned an agreement. Do you have a copy of the agreement?
That's what I had handed up to you was the agreement by the, the family that they would come back and not ask for commercial development, that if they would ask for something else if they were allowed to zone at the north property.
So, you don't actually have an agreement?
There's not a written contract.
It's signed by an individual?
No, sir.
Okay. So-
I have somebody's word.
You have somebody's word. Okay.
I think that's a pretty valuable thing.
And then the residential development, what year was that brought before the council?
2006.
2006. And did you represent the neighborhood at that time?
I did, yes, sir.
So, in the agreement that you state, they clearly state that it could be O&amp;I type development or multifamily. And that was part of the agreement, but yet you represented the neighborhood to fight residential, which was part of the agreement.
No, sir. We agreed to the residential, that wasn't agreed upon rezoning. The neighborhood agreed to that.
But you said you represented them to fight that.
To, to, to agree to the terms of the conditional use permit. That was a hotly contested matter that resulted in an agreement of the boundaries of that.
It was hotly contested to build residential?
To how it was to be set up and designed, how the buildings would be arranged. It was changed several times in the process. It was a long negotiation process.
And then my last thing is, you brought up the Comprehensive Plan and mentioned Dr. Curlin was on the, the council that approved that. Is it your opinion then that the Comprehensive Plan should never, ever be changed?
No, sir. It should be changed a lot.
But you are using that as a reasoning not to approve this because it's in the Comprehensive Plan as one way?
Yes, sir, because this property has been considered repeatedly for something other than a residential use and it's been turned down. And the Comprehensive Plan has adopted that and gone forward. Nothing has changed, other than the development of Franklin Square, which was agreed to, and the neighborhood has remained strong.
So, you're saying the Comprehensive Plan shouldn't be changed?
I say it shouldn't be changed, no, sir. Not for this project.
Oh, so just for this one? If it's another project, we can change it?
Mr. Pierceall, I'm talking about for this property.
I, I'm trying to get to the point that you brought up the Comprehensive Plan and said it was approved by a previous council-
Yes, sir.
-and should not be changed for this project.
It should be, it should stand for residential development on this parcel.
And my question is, so in your opinion, the Comprehensive Plan should never be changed?
It should not be changed for commercial development on this site, yes, sir.
On this site?
Yes, sir.
So, it should be changed for others, just not this one?
It's possible, yes.
Okay. I just want to get that clear.
Any other questions? Any other questions of the council? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, this is the beginning of our, well, no, that's still, jumping the gun. Mr. Eric Elliott, spokesman in opposition to the rezoning, will give, will be given 10 minutes to make his presentation. And Eric, I'll take, I'll take your name off the green list. You and Mr. Fields.
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all and good evening. My name is Eric Elliott and I live at 410 Deerwood Drive. As the graphic shows, if this rezoning is approved, my family's home marked by the proverbial X on the spot, will have a view of Academy Sports' front door from our front door. So, I want you to know, I'm personally not just a not-in-my-backyard opponent, but I am before you tonight as a representative of a large number of folks opposed to the commercial rezoning of this parcel. I want to thank upfront the members of this council and city staffers like Jason at Planning, Mr. Munn, for giving a fair hearing to concerns expressed by myself and others on this matter. And I would like to thank the petitioners' representatives for their professionalism in our interactions. They are good people with whom we just have an honest disagreement. Yet, I would be grateful tonight if you would agree with the recent vote of the Planning Commission and deny this rezoning request. Unlike the claims made in a recent Gaston Gazette editorial, denying a commercial use for this property will not affect other development proposals in town. It certainly hasn't after any of the half dozen other denials over the last 40-plus years. In fact, the same paper also recently called this Franklin corridor hyper-developed. All those denials in the past say about our attitude towards economic growth is that there are issues with this parcel. Not just neighbor issues, but citywide concerns for the intensity of land use on that environmentally sensitive patch. The words of the city's planning director in 1991 are true even more today. He said then that the existing trees and ground cover help shield the neighborhood along Franklin Boulevard. And here you can see on a winter's night, the view from Rosemary. Through the woods, it makes a difference when the lights go out. Here is at the end of Whitethorne. Here is at the end of Pamela, looking at from Franklin. And there is the current most dense patch near my house at Deerwood Drive. The planning director in 1991 said that this property should not be rezoned to permit retail commercial uses. The Upper Dewards Basin is the most heavily commercially developed creek basin in our county. Right now, being built in it is a new restaurant in front of a new ABC store, a new car wash after another one expanded, a new hotel along the interstate. I believe we do not adequately measure how those investments may be undermined by permissible development standards not squaring with stormwater realities. A study came out in February of this year from engineers studying flooding that was more severe than expected in Missouri last year. They concluded that current models don't adequately account for the addition of new stormwater runoff from later added impermeable surfaces on the reliability of 100-year floodplain data. Now, tonight, the petitioners proposed to build right up against a 100-year floodline with that wall, whose re-survey has been often proposed and still not yet finished, perhaps in part because the actual 100-year line is not what it is now. How often has development in this creek basin been denied for its effect on the 100-year floodline? Do you think there is a cumulative effect that in our regulations we might be missing? Twice in the last two years, July of 2014, December of 2015, our neighbors experienced 100-year flood events from rains far less than 100-year rain events. Here's a view along Rosemary during the flood event in December of 2015. Here's the end of Deerwood, looking across this very parcel. Here's the end of Pamela. Here's up further upstream creek on Armstrong Creek behind some of the houses on Pamela, where this water all backs up. My and my neighbors' too often flooded backyards suggest, yes, we are not accurately measuring the 100-year floodline. In the months since November's proposal of a Dewards Creek Conservation Area around this parcel, the city's stormwater department has stopped proposing an ongoing monitoring station for water flow and quality here, saying they can more economically monitor indicator species to catch problems. Sadly, there aren't as many of those species here as there used to be. The only thing worse for this creek, more than the infill development upstream though, is commercial development in the very place that all that upstream water gathers and funnels out. That is, right where this Leinberger parcel is. You see, topographically, this parcel is part of a basin where all the water upstream gathers in floodtimes before exiting in a quick left and right turn out of the area. The petitioner's own hydrology report, shown here, says it's at the end of the Upper Dewards Basin, but it ignores the fact that it is also at the junction of two other drainage areas, Armstrong Creek and Tributary D3 that runs from north of A-85 under Lowe's. Petitioners say that paving and building here is tantamount to adding only a small portion to the flooding. What'd they say? adding only a small portion to the flooding. What'd they say, 1%? Sort of like this dime? It's about, oh, 100 of those will go fill the surface area at the top of this funnel. But as you know, in real estate, location is everything, and if you put that 1% development closer to where things funnel out, you run the risk of things blocking up. From growth projections for an area, you might think it is all of our shared destiny to be paved over soon. But not every wooded parcel has its best use in commercial development. 12,000 extra cars are forced to use Armstrong Park and Red Bud to get up and out and over to Charlotte every day for work, because there's no bridge to Charlotte in the southern part of our county. My neighbors and I are sorely stressed just getting in and out of our place already. And like a third's group of Tony's Grape Ice Cream, even with commercial development, there can be too much of a good thing. We do not need more big box commerce in our area at the present time. Few in our region who drive to Franklin Square complain that the traffic is too light. Certainly, no one does when there is a wreck on I-85. There are better sites able and willing to handle this development in town. And commercial intrusion at this site, where it is in view or directly affecting at least 70 homes, will negatively affect the resale marketability of all of our properties. Now, in 2006, we've heard tonight, after much discussion, over a year of dialogue between neighbors and petitioners, a good, not perfect, plan allowed for a far less intense use on just the highest parts of this parcel. Since 1997, the city has officially, in its long-range plans, planned for this area to be kept as green space. And I might say, the virtue of a long-range plan, it's how the rest of us know what you all are thinking. And so, when somebody comes and wants to invest and move into a neighborhood, they'd like to know, what's the city planning for down the road? So it's important that you do sort of try to honor those plans as you make those reevaluations. I think the best use for this property is still what it had in the Franklin Corridor plan in 2014, which is to keep it green space. And as passionate as I've been in opposing this development, I'll be glad to stand next to the owners advocating for the city and others to buy this parcel from them and leave it as green space. Tonight's vote does not have to ultimately decide what will happen with this property. The council's acceptance of lands around it in 2014 should not have obligated the city to any future zoning action, just avoiding the supermajority requirement. I'd like to now ask my neighbor, Mark Neely, to present to the council through City Attorney Ash Smith, the grab signatures of 143 folks and the online digital signatures of 102 others who tonight are petitioning you to deny this rezoning. Now, would all those who are in attendance and oppose this rezoning please stand? Thank you. These folks will care about the value of their backyards, as responsible homeowners should, but they also care about Franklin Boulevard, which we all acknowledge is the commercial gateway to our city. But we want a balance of commerce and livability that makes our place desirable. Our neighborhoods have absorbed much of the burdens of our area's commercial growth. Please don't keep adding to those burdens until we break as a healthy part of the city. Do what 40 years of your predecessors have, say we are pro-business, but also pro-residence. We are pro-commercial growth, just not here, not in this way. Thank you very much.
Mr. Elliott, Mr. Elliott, make sure they don't have any questions for you.
Any questions, Mr. Elliott? Anyone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Elliott, you've been made mention of supermajority?
Yeah. At the time you guys accepted the gift from the Leinbergers to create what the land that you now propose as a conservation area, it was still state law that the neighbors had the right, if a rezoning action was brought, that we could request through a petition process that there be a supermajority before any rezoning occurred. As you know, the legislature changed that provision last summer. That's no longer an option, but certainly at the time this gift was proffered, that had to figure into the conversation of it.
So there is no supermajority any longer?
That's right. We hope to get a simple one. That's good enough for us.
Because with this, this land that the city had accepted, it's a buffer zone, correct?
You know, the thing about the buffer zone, and I'm all for all buffers, is that most of it is the existing sewer easement, which the folks couldn't build on anyway, and lands that are wetlands from the discharge from Franklin Square North, the original first phase. You know, I think some of the ideas in that conservation area plan that came out in November are good ones, extra planning. I just don't think it's currently set up to be, certainly not a greenway, certainly not a nature trail. It needs more space, which is why if you're going to build in that parcel, I'd love to go back to the 2006 compromise, build high residential, leave room for greenery, and as you see in the winter, we're already stressed before you've taken down any trees. It's already working into our neighborhood. So we really could appreciate the help. We're all for growth. We benefit from the nearness of commercial development. We just don't want it on top of us and in us.
But the buffer zone here does have trees, and it's not just the sewer easement.
There is some buffer at the back toward this property, but as you notice, that map is inaccurate in the way it presents its all green. I wish it were a field of sequoias that would just grow up, or thousand-foot arbivores. It's not. So the density of the development of trees is not there. You know, when I first moved, our family first moved to the neighborhood, there were a lot of lob-lolly pines, which is a common lowland scrub around here, that adds evergreen, you know, blockage of the blight that's from the commercial areas. Whatever you do with your parcel, put a few of those in there, that will help. But as far as, it still doesn't solve the problem. As I think I've told you, I used to be a Sunday school teacher in a past life, and that story about Solomon splitting the baby was not an instruction on how to split a baby. It was a guide, "Don't go there." I don't think on this particular small parcel, you can both have an intense environmental use and an intense commercial use. It's a baby you don't want to split.
Right, but it is the person's property, and they could do with it, this is the Leinberger property, and they could do with it what they want.
Well, no, I don't think they can do what they want. That's why we have zoning.
Okay, by us taking the buffer zone, we're trying to protect the neighborhood. That was our whole intent. The other thing is, they could come in and clear-cut right up
You know, the funny thing is, is that you, and I know this, you've all got family members, you can't stop your neighbor from making a stupid choice. You can't, as a council, refuse to endorse stupid choices. That's all we're asking.
That is true, but you still have a buffer zone with trees that are in it. It's not just the easement, okay?
You have a buffer. I'd love for you to have more. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
I just have one quick question. This property goes into dispute longer than I've been in Gaston County. Has the neighborhood ever thought to come together as a group and purchase the property so that it's never in dispute again?
You know, one of the things, this has been an evolving process, you know, one of the reasons I think there should be a petition requirement is neighborhoods are hard to organize. They're not unified with a lawyer and a checkbook. It's taken a long time to get our group together. We've got a great crowd here that have put up with seven or eight months of delays. We don't know whom to fight. It's hard to raise money for attorneys and stuff. I have on my to-do list, and I'd like to do, starting tomorrow, if you guys deny this, I'd be glad to go down to the Gaston Community Foundation, talk to the Trust for Public Lands, Catawba Lands Conservancy, see if we can't put together a package. This has been on the plan since 97 as a greenway, and yet there's never been a proposal, a bond, to try to float, to purchase this land from the city. Our area is underserved by recreational activities. I think we got a track at Gardner Park School. It is one of the nicer residential areas, but if you don't invest in some amenities for the area, that will suffer, especially as we're coming under this traffic stress. So I would love to work, I don't think we have the organizational capacity yet. I don't think the city has the will yet to float a bond, but I think if we work together with private partners and with the public investment, and, you know, when I look at our marketing to other counties, why do you want to come to Gaston County? Well, in our area, we're the green spot. We've got Crowder's, we've got Stowe Gardens. This could be the start, the visual reminder, in the midst of our most intense commercial area, we also value green. But we have to invest and buy and secure it, not just squander it. All those little kids that were making pictures, it'd be great if they were making pictures of the Leinberger Greenway in 20 years.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Elliott, with the current buffer zone, did you and your neighbors still hear a lot of noise from the traffic on Franklin Boulevard?
I'd love to invite any of you to come out. You know that movie a few years back with John Candy, Plane, Trains, and Automobiles? I sat out one night, one afternoon at 4:00 on my back patio, counted half a dozen planes coming overhead from Douglas Airport, counted, heard the roar of trucks. This is in the middle of the afternoon. It's intense right now. In certain times of day, it's not pleasant. However, there are other blissful moments, and I'm glad that I have those trees and those woods and my neighbors who take care of their property.
I have a follow-up question. With that current buffer zone, do you and your neighbors have light that comes through in the middle of the night and disturb you and keep you up at night because of all the lights?
I woke up just Sunday morning to a Facebook post from a friend of mine who had that very experience happen in the middle of the night. Fortunately, I'm a better sleeper than her. But yes, we believe we have that problem.
And one more question. With that current buffer zone, do you and your neighbors still have flooding that destroys your backyards and causes you all to look at your property and wonder what the value will be 10 to 15 years from now?
Yeah, one of the things that we need to do, regardless of what you have in this property, and there was good suggestions in that conservation area plan, the stormwater folks know we've got problems now because we have not, we don't have a fund to enable all that upstream development to retrofit to current standards. If we lessen that stormwater load, it would help everybody, and mainly, you know, this parcel is right, that D3 tributary. I know the Leinberger family has all that land north of 85. That land, though, is at the top of that tributary's floodplain. This is at the bottom of that upper, so it's easier to take and care of, fix problems at the top than down at the bottom. Although, as we were talking earlier beforehand, the opponents were talking, if you can get from ground zero, it might be easier to do it at the bottom. But we're not at the luxury of ground zero. We have to work on the fly with where things are right now. We need to retrofit and improve. We need to not make a bad situation worse. And I'll say this, a bad idea does not become better simply by mere repetition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have, according to procedure, we have four folks that have signed up under the public hearing sign-up sheet on this item, and I would ask, I guess it's certainly my duty to ask, we're so happy that people let it be known that they, how they feel, and they should, you have to. This is a hearing, and I would like for everyone, let's wait until the, let's don't clap anymore. Let's don't talk loud anymore. Let everyone do their thing, and let's get the hearing, and then we can do that, because I'm guilty of it as much as anyone. The next name on the list for the sign-up sheet is Mr. Robert Brown, Back Creek Lane, Gastonia. Next will be Mr. Joel Long. These are three-minute comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Robert Brown. I do live at 1663 Back Creek Lane, Gastonia, and I am the chairman of the Greater Gaston Development Corporation Sites, Building, and Infrastructure Committee. I would like to thank the council for this time to speak and for your listening to both parties of this discussion, and for your continued to work in making Gastonia and Gaston County a better place to live, work, and play. As any business or service firm knows, if they don't have what the customer needs, they likely lose the sale. This same thing applies to Gaston County and all our municipalities. In other words, when a new or expanding business inquires about building in our community, what do we have to show the client? In our committee's findings, after several months of investigation and study, it was found that Gastonia and Gaston County is severely lacking in having proper ready, property readily available for development. In case of academy sports and the development of the property in question, one important point to be clear on is that the local and state building codes will not allow any development to be put in place that would allow the development or that property to impose undue hardship to the adjacent property owners or any way damage or potentially cause damage to their property. A recent case in point was development of the Target Store. It's in the same tributary. It still contributes, and if you elect not to approve this, it does not change what is currently already happening there in the issue toward flooding. That is not this developer's responsibility to fix. So, with regards to the floodplain issues, as mentioned by others, the developer has gone beyond the requirements in their proposed design in an effort to provide protection while enhancing the area. The North Carolina Department of Natural Resources and the Gaston County Department of Natural Resources will require that the development of this property to control or to contain the water runoff so that no damage will be done to the adjacent or downstream property owners. As y'all very well know, I am a general contractor dealing in commercial work only. I deal with this daily. I understand the impacts of stormwater management and the runoff, and in 30 years of doing this, I've seen it changed from digging a hole and later filling it up, sowing grass over it, to, as Ben mentioned, the underwater underground detention systems that are used today that are very expensive. I've got three projects right now that are currently using that system. So, I would ask that you consider this potential property development and allow the agencies who have more knowledge and facts to determine the design and approval of this project. In closing, it was Albert Einstein who provided the definition of insanity as continuously doing the same things while expecting different results. In order to gain different outcomes, one must make different decisions. Once again, we have a project before you with a developer that is willing to go beyond the minimum requirements.
Mr. Brown, I'm sorry. It's, Mr. Long, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll wave him, but, you go. Thank you, sir. And Mr. Joel Long, go ahead.
Mayor Bridgman and council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Joel Long, 407 East Long Avenue in Gastonia. I am the current chair of the Greater Gaston Development Corporation. We're a business-led organization focusing on growth and attracting capital investment to Gaston County, and we were founded in 2014 by a group of business people trying to improve our situation. I thought it'd be appropriate to read our vision with this organization. Our vision, think about this for Gaston County. Gaston County is the preferred Charlotte-area location for new and expanding business. It serves as an ideal regional site for capital investment, employment opportunities, and inclusive growth. Also thought it'd be important to read our mission as a group. "To support and implement directly and through others, an initiative that identifies and helps advance a coordinated set of ambitiously realistic actions that measurably strengthen the factors impacting Gaston County's economic competitiveness, thereby notably increasing quality, new, and expanded investments in the area." This applies directly to this situation tonight that you guys are facing. These situations are never easy, and I really applaud the citizens here tonight and our group talking to you tonight about how to improve the city of Gastonia. Why was the GGDC formed in 2014? There were two major factors that we recognized, and you guys recognized, and I know a lot of our citizens do also. Gaston County is the slowest-growing county that's connected to Mecklenburg County, and we need to do specific things to overcome that slow growth when compared to the other counties in our region. We also, at the same time, face a situation where, in that region, we have the highest real property taxes of any of the other counties, and we have to do things to overcome that so that we can address the other social issues and economic issues that our cities and our counties face every day. Speaking on behalf of the GGDC and its members, we believe this project meets the criteria needed to improve job growth, increase our tax base in the city, and also help us, in turn, improving our future so that we can address the other opportunity and problems that we have in our city and in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have two left. Mr. Jeff Sanford, I'm sorry I didn't call your name earlier, and when you're through with Mr. Donnie Hicks, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and fellow citizens. Jeff Sanford, I'm president and CEO of the Gaston Regional Chamber. I reside at 3672 Brentwood in Gastonia. As a relative newcomer to the area, I am appreciative of the history lesson from all sides tonight. It does remind me, however, of a current- It does remind me, however, of a current popular television commercial where the young man says such things as he's never getting married. A few moments later, you see him married. He says, I'm getting a minivan, never moving to the suburbs, et cetera. You know how it goes. At the end of the day, all of those decisions that he overcame ended up resulting in a very nice life for him and one that is envious for everyone. That leads me to today. Like Mr. Long and others, I want to thank you guys for considering all sides of this. I think it's important to look at every side. Everybody has great remarks to talk about. I'm here to represent the Board of Directors for the Gaston Regional Chamber and present a voice for the business community. As you know, the Gaston Regional Chamber has been representing regional businesses for more than a century. The Chamber has been in a supportive or leadership role in many of the region's top growth efforts for decades, and remains a go-to organization for developers and investors who wish to enhance the economic climate of our area. Recently, our Board of Directors of the Chamber convened to discuss all aspects of this development. For the Chamber Board to get involved in such issues, it is increasingly important to make sure we study all the facts. We weigh all the outcomes and its impact on the economic well-being of our community and of our region. Several factors have to be considered and subsequently pass our litmus test. In the case of Academy and the development in question, we examine the site, flood mitigation, consumer habits, and the overall enhancement of the area. After studying each area, the Chamber believes the developer's proposal addresses or exceeds requirements for every potential concern. Moreover, the increase in tax base will supply needed funds to the community for increased services and/or amenities needed for continual attraction of job growth and workers for our region. Speaking of unemployment, this nationally known and stable business will supply more than 100 jobs, including approximately 80 full-time positions, another entry into our continued workforce development efforts. With regards to the floodplain issues, as we've heard several different examples of this, the developer has gone above and beyond to meet flood requirements, or flood control requirements, excuse me. This is more attention to the area than even the city has committed in the past, and at long last will safeguard the area from potential flooding issues. This addresses and puts to bed in our minds any environmental concerns for the area in question as it vastly improves the current situation. A third consideration for the business community is what's next? By the very nature of development, there is often a need to look forward as to what long-term effects any new development might have on a community. We looked at this and noticed that with most investments of this kind, secondary and possibly even tertiary investments take place, expanding the tax base at an even higher level for years to come. Property values are elevated, and community amenities are further enhanced by the influx of visitors and other investors looking to grow our local economy. With this said, I wish to express to the Council, rather, that the Gaston Regional Chamber's Board of Directors have unanimously voted to support this development, and we ask that you do as well.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Hicks. Thank you, Mr. Sanford.
Yeah, I do, too.
I'm Donnie Hicks, 2120 Chadwell Court, Gastonia, North Carolina. I'm the Executive Director of the Gaston County EDC. We've been working with the city staff and ultimately the city council over the last couple of years to try to look at retail recruitment in the city. If we were to make a list of companies we want to recruit, this would be one of them, and they're here and wanting to locate in Gastonia. One of the other major constraints the city has is a lack of available retail space for someone to move into. It's a good problem to have. It means that most of the space is occupied and not empty, but you have relatively few locations where new companies can enter. Mr. Rollar and his development will address two of those. It'll allow you to recruit a major target that we'd have on our list, and also have space for other people to locate, too. One of the challenges of this site is that all the easy sites are done. A lot of the sites that you would want to develop are done. It's in a very attractive area in which to locate. And one of the challenges that you're going to have to figure out is how to continue to grow the retail corridor with greater density than we have in the past and match that up with residential development or other adjacent uses. This is successfully done in other places. If you look at Charlotte Strategy, they know that they don't have as much land as they once had. So a major focus of their development plans is increased density. If you look at areas like the Arboretum, certainly if you look at Morrocroft, you have residential development adjacent to retail development and some of the highest housing values in the region located next to each other. It can be done. I'm one of the few people in the room that have had to build stormwater basins and then be responsible for maintaining them. This development is not going to necessarily increase the flooding threat. What you need to do is decide what standard you'd like the developer to build to, what you think's appropriate from an engineering standpoint, ask them to build at that standard, use your stormwater fees to develop a program to deal with the other issues along Dewhart Creek. I live not too far from it, and I know what the flooding issues are. This project is not going to change that one way or other. And I would encourage you to take a hard look at this project, find a way to approve it. You're going to want a healthy retail corridor where people want to continue to invest. You want a retail corridor that's vibrant and fully utilized. You don't want to have a situation where you don't provide an outlet for future development, and then you have a period of disinvestment where people can't locate there, and they choose to go somewhere else. You only have to look as far as Albemarle Road and Eastland Mall in Charlotte to see what happens when disinvestment occurs in those retail areas. I would strongly encourage you to approve the project and find some way to match the needs of the neighbors with the development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Now, we will have rebuttal from, I believe, Mr. Fields went first. So now it's his five minutes. If we'll set the timer for five minutes, but time spent answering questions does not count towards that five minutes.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Okay. Mr. Fields?
Thank you, Mayor. As I said, we have actually enjoyed this process and working with the folks that you've heard from tonight. They taught me a lot about their community. It's clear that there's a lot of passion connected to this property. I learned that at the community meeting that we had many months ago when we were going back and forth on issues. And I said, let me ask y'all a question straight up. Is there something else going on here? And apparently, there is. And it deals with the comments apparently made by Mr. Patrick a number of years ago, which Mr. Arthur has introduced to you, and he showed them to me, and clearly, that occurred. I don't know exactly how you weigh that. The planning board meeting minutes are public record, and lots of conversations occur. But I looked at the minutes of your meeting, the city council, on that same topic, when it came forward for the city council's consideration in July of 1988. And there was a lot of the same questions. There were questions about water. There were questions about traffic. Out of that conversation came the genesis of the notion for the three-party arrangement to help fix Franklin Boulevard. The planning director at the time was very straightforward in terms of making sure that that got done as part of that rezoning. But it's equally clear from reading those minutes that it was, that this piece of property you're talking about tonight was not part of that petition, was not subject to any of the requirements of that petition. And it was laid out that if someone came forward later with a specific plan, it could be looked at. What's also interesting to me, Mr. Arthur talks about the long and illustrious history of folks battling development of this property. On that occasion, in July of 1988, when the Franklin Square rezoning was being considered, according to your minutes, no one spoke against it. So I'm a little confused about where the issue lies, but I will not dispute anything that he said that he read to you from the planning board minutes. I'm not quite as sneaky as I think he may think I am. We, he pointed out an old plan that's not before you tonight, and you should see my file full of all the old plans for this site that changed a whole lot before we got to you on this occasion. And we have made a number of changes at the direction and with the cooperation of the staff and because Mount Castle was willing to step up. And like Mr. Arthur's, I'm sure when he represents his clients before you on a rezoning, yes, I do push back. I say, well, if he wants to do another standard, tell me what it is, and what's it, where's this coming from? But obviously, as you see from our performance, we rose to the occasion that Ms. McMacon laid out for us a challenge to do a better job with stormwater, and we rose to that occasion, and we did that. Mr. Arthur's was confused that the plan that's currently approved was only 11 acres. Well, that's true. It wasn't the entire site. So we're now dealing with the entire site. I mentioned that in my opening comments, that we had to make a choice of doing a part of it or all of it, and we brought it all in. And he mentioned a traffic study, which was done for no more of an exercise than to understand the sorts of road improvements that had previously been discussed and whether or not this site would trigger that requirement. The staff clarified for us later that it does. I'd like to go back and leave you with the thoughts that I left you with earlier. I'm a city planner. I know the struggles that the communities have in dealing with a site that has challenges and dealing with a high-profile site that has such a history as Mr. Arthur's laid out. And it's always difficult when you adopt a new plan, and the old plan said residential and it's zoned residential, to just let the new plan follow what the zoning says. I have no idea if that's what occurred. We're asking you to look at this site in the environment where it's located. It's part of a major commercial corridor. It's part of a regional commercial center. It's an opportunity for new growth and new development. And I would suggest to you that a motion to approve would include a statement of consistency that relates those issues, that we meet all the standards and, in fact, exceed many of the standards in the ordinance, that we are part of this regional growth, that we are in a location that's appropriate for this sort of development, that we have added protections to the plan specifically in response to concerns that we've heard from our nearby neighbors and from the city staff. If you come to that conclusion, we would appreciate your support, and we would do the job that we have laid out that we would do as part of this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Elliott? Yes, sir. Mr. Crawford?
Mr. Fields?
Mr. Fields, did the developer look at any other parcels in the city or county?
I am not sure. Mr. Rollar is the guy that looks for property for their clients, and Academy is one of their clients. My understanding, they did look at other sites, and they thought this was the best one for what they were trying to do.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for your patience this evening.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Arthur's will have about 4 and... 440, right? 440.
That's my height. First of all, the contribution of 27 acres to the city a year and a half ago was 1.75 acres less than the Leinberger family agreed to give in consideration for the rezoning in 2006. They never made the contribution. That's where they get the extra acreage to add to this development. So once again, they didn't live up to it. We're the Leinbergers tonight to answer that question. They're not here. But I don't understand how they can agree to give the city 28.75 acres in 2006 and not do it and get rezoned, and then come up here and give you 27 acres and say, now, instead of letting us put residential, let's put the most intensive commercial development we can in there. That's not right. That's another go-back-on-our-word. I want to show you something on this map. See that stormwater detention basin, that one? There's the bottom of that 14-foot wall. And if the water rises two feet, the basin's going to fill up from the floods, not from the water running off the site. And it's flooding. You saw Mr. Elliott shows you, it's flooding now. And when it floods, it's going to fill up that basin, and it's going to fill up Mr. Elliott's house, because there's a wall for several hundred feet blocking it on the other side. 450 acres. Oh, there was a reason in 1988 there wasn't anybody at city council, because it's planning commission, there was an agreement. They weren't asking to rezone the south side. They agreed, we won't come back to the south side. We're just after the north. And that's all they had in that petition, is the north side in 1988. So when it came to city council, it wasn't to rezone the south side. It was to rezone the north. But they agreed, we won't go to the south. Just because you might deny this petition tonight doesn't mean Academy Sports isn't coming. Doesn't mean this parcel won't be developed. I'm going to give you two examples of why the city standing up with a backbone upheld, and the people still came. One is the Walgreens at the intersection of Cox Road and Franklin. They stood here and told the city council at that time, if you don't let us have a left-in and left-out, we will not put Walgreens here. Walgreens is there. You can't turn left to get in or out. Harris Teeters came here two years ago and wanted to go across from Heatherlock, and they weren't going to come back. It wasn't a year later they were approved for a site down the road. They're almost finished construction. So don't let them fool you. We've got economic development, but we've got a neighborhood, a big one, that needs to be protected. They were promised protection. They've been given by this city council and planning commission continuous protection, and now they're asking to rip it away from them. I ask you not to do it. Do what's been done for years and years and years. Leave this a residential neighborhood. Leave this floodplain alone. We don't know what's out there in the floodplain, but I do know that there's more acreage in this than what the last engineer said was in the floodplain. One final thing. Your city staff's opposed, the planning commission was opposed, and all our councils have been opposed. What has changed? Nothing.
Any questions of Mr. Arthur's?
I apologize.
Okay. Thanks, Phil.
Now, it's time for deliberations of the council, Mr. Mayor.
Do we close?
You can close the public hearing. If a question comes up, though, and you have to call someone, we have to go through the mechanics of reopening it. So my advice would be to do some deliberations before closing.
Okay. All right. Questions? Comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Gallagher?
You know, hearing both sides of the argument here, it's apparent is Dewhart's Creek, and it's causing a lot of flooding to these people right here, regardless if this building goes in or not. And it's not just there. It's also, there's another creek coming down that's Armstrong Creek or whatever. But we should consider using some of the city's stormwater money to look for ways to make improvements so flooding becomes minimal for the people here, and work with Cramerton, because whatever we do upstream, as Eric has pointed out, will happen downstream towards them. And they are also going through, and, you know, maybe we get the county involved with it as well. Because the flooding that they're experiencing is the same type of flooding that my folks went through when Sandy came through in New Jersey. There was one, I went down the street and knocked on a bunch of doors and asked people about this upcoming thing. And one of the guys said that it was hard for him to get flood insurance because he was in the floodplain. Matter of fact, he was like several inches from the floodplain, his foundation. And then after that, there was a big storm, and, man, I saw all the pictures. But we need to, we need to look into doing something for this Dewhart's Creek for the long term that's going to help, you know, solve the problem for the residents and all that are interested here. I mean, I feel for them. I know what they're going through in terms of flooding. So I just think the whole issue is Dewhart's Creek.
Dr.
Couple points. First of all, I want to thank the business community for coming out tonight. For me, and I don't know, but we haven't seen you guys before, at least not in this venue. So thank you for stepping up and being part of the conversation. That being said, you kind of picked the low-hanging fruit because of it being an undeveloped site in a very prime area. Now, that totally makes sense, okay? But what we would ask you, regardless of what happens tonight, is we would ask you to partner with us more, because we have a lot of opportunities in the city for development. And for instance, Robert here has taken on, you know, some initiative with Jim Gallagher, looking at the Acres Shopping Center site. You know, a very viable site, very close to, you know, this area. We need help, though, because that's a challenging site. You've got sites on the west end. You've got, you know, the property north of 85. So there's lots of property out there. We would love to work with you guys, like I say, regardless of what happens, you know, tonight. And... And I like the fact that you're here and I like that you're speaking up and that the business community is getting involved in many ways. So, I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys being here. Couple other points. I've had an opportunity to sit through this experience a few times. When, when this was discussed in 2006, it was a very difficult decision for me at the time to actually vote for the rezoning that occurred. In fact, I lost votes. I think I lost some friends because some of the neighborhood didn't want it changed at all. But I truly thought that it was the best possibility for this piece of property. And if you look at it really closely, it has a lot of great, you know, characteristics. The way the buildings are aligned, the visual blockage that occurs between Franklin and the neighborhood, the way that the parking is all in front of the building, you know, the lighting is involved with that, whether it be permeable surfaces or what have you, whether they were going to go forward or not, there was an attempt made there. That's a great plan. I don't think that's a bad plan today. You know, I would wish or hope that we could, again, market this property for that intended purpose. I guess it's the Affordable Housing Group, you know, just was approved to build a similar type of property over off of Glenwood, okay? Now, that neighborhood found that to be an acceptable use of that property for a lot of the same reasons you found that used to be an acceptable use of the property between you and Franklin Square. And that, I guess, will go forward. Now, it's all about the funding and Shelter Group didn't get the points, they didn't get the financing, it was never built. I wish it had been, neither here nor there. But I think that's still the best use for the property, other than, you know, taking it back, whether the city takes back, Mr. Elliott makes some great points, you know, let's, you know, turn it into a park, build a lake there, whatever. You want water, we'll, we'll put some more water in there, you know? Figure out how to make that go up and down safely. But anyway, but the most important thing I want to make, my point is, is really about the comprehensive plan. If, if this property needs to be something other than what it's currently zoned, then I think it needs to go back to the comprehensive planning process first. And the reason I say that is because, again, Mr. Elliott made the point, that the comprehensive plan is, it's your roadmap for planning. And I think it needs to be consistent, it needs to be fair, it needs to be predictable, and there needs to be some level of assurance that it's going to be there. We pulled a couple of quick ones, or tried to pull a couple of quick ones, on the folks that built the, the shopping center development out where Lotus is and the Lowe's was and Publix is going to be. Okay, and those folks came in there and they developed that property. Well, you know, I heard from that developer, when the Harris Teeter project of 20 acres was proposed for the corner of Kendrick and Huffman-Robinwood there on its original site, which was eventually turned down, the developer said, you know, if we had known that the comprehensive plan was such that there could have been another competitive shopping center this close to the one that we developed, we may have reconsidered, you know, developing this shopping center. We already have vacancies at this point. Now, you're putting another shopping center within about a mile or whatever of the Lowe's Lotus Shopping Center, I'll call it. And I, and I took that to heart and I said, you know, you're right, you know? Where's the, where's the consistency? Where's the fairness? Where's the predictability, you know, when it comes to this? If you're going to, you know, all of a sudden move all the puzzle pieces just that easily? So, so I voted against that Harris Teeter project and for the same reason. And, and I think until this comprehensive plan would reflect a different purpose, I don't think it's fair to the citizens who live there. If we change the comprehensive plan, give them time to move. If they don't like it, if we want to put commercial in there in the comprehensive plan, you know, you guys got time to, to go. Have a nice life, find, find another place to live. And the last thing I'll, I'll make, real quick point because it's personal, and that is, is I live on Thomas Trail and I always think I live in two houses. I have a summer house and a winter house, okay? Well, Thomas Trail is right behind the auto dealerships and from there I can see Gaston Mall and from there I can see 85 and from there I can hear the train every morning at about 5:00 a.m. Okay, so when the, the dealerships bring their car carriers up in the morning, I can hear when that big, you know, ramp comes down, boom, and those cars are being taken off those, those trailers, okay? And we hear all this, you know? Now, it's worse in the winter because of the foliage and it's better in the summer. So, we do have two separate houses where we live and we, we have gotten used to that. But over the last almost 30 years we've lived there, it has gotten worse and worse and worse just because of all the development. So, I just make that as a personal note so that I, I too live with what these people don't want to live with. Or they live with it already, but not as bad. So, thank you.
Anything else? Yes, sir.
I think we, I think we all up here want economic development. I think we all would love to just see the floodgates open with, with new retail space and, and small business and, and all kinds of development coming to Gastonia. I think the, the real question here is, how do you balance neighborhoods, existing neighborhoods, with economic development and growth? And this really is a perfect case study for cities that grapple with that question all the time. How do you balance that? I think first you have to look at the specific site and I'm not convinced this site is suitable for such a large project as this. I would, I would agree with Councilman Curlin who went back to the 2006, I believe it was the 2006 proposal and rezoning, which has residential and the, maybe a building up. There are a lot of seniors in Gastonia who are displaced, who are looking for reliable housing, who are looking for a good place to live, that something along those lines, in my thinking, would be more beneficial than an Academy of Sports on Franklin. Now, that's not to say that I don't want Academy Sports here. I think it would be a great addition to Gastonia. I think there are places in our, in our city that need to be revitalized. And I think we also have to look at that equation when we're, when we're examining questions like this. Do we continue to build on one specific street in one specific area to the detriment of other areas in our city? Look at what's happening in Acres Center. I, I work there. I manage a retail shop there and I feel like the Lone Ranger at times way back in that corner. And there's nothing else other than Ollies on one side and Keel Insurance on the other. The demographics are there. People are buying. I mean, my numbers, and I probably shouldn't be speaking publicly about where I work, but we make a good business there. We could do even better if we had neighbors. Bring Academy Sports to Acres Center. I will, I will, I will wash your feet if you can do that. I, I, honest to God. And if you don't want to go to Acres Center, go to the mall across the street. That mall needs help. And if you don't want to go to the mall, go down to Dave's Neck of the Woods in West Gastonia. There are places that can, that can handle an Academy Sports. And, and those are the questions I'm, I'm grappling with. And for those reasons, I, I would not be able to support rezoning.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Harper?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everybody that's spoken tonight, for and against. The only way we can make an informed decision is if we're informed. And I've said over and over, we need more information from citizens, from businesses, from anybody involved with any, any item coming before the council. So, that, that means a lot when this amount of people shows up for an issue like this. Now, granted, it's an important issue, but it, it really means a lot to us to have people here trying to convince us one way or another. That being said, I thoroughly believe in supporting the rights of property owners, all property owners. The Leinberger family, these families, my family, everybody's family. You, you all have rights as a property owner. However, you do not have the right to infringe or affect your neighbor without some kind of recourse by somebody. Good fences make good neighbors. That was a, a nice poem. I am a huge supporter of businesses' development. We need to develop every square foot of available land we can develop in this city and outside the city. And I'm, I'm, I'm including the county, too. We need to increase the tax base. We're not going to be able to do any of these projects. The creek, a lot of money's going to be involved in whatever is decided for mediation of the creek. The money's got to come from somewhere. There's only so many resources for income for the city. Increased tax base is the best way because at the same time you get more development, you get more jobs. Not only the construction jobs that are going to happen when the place is built, but I, I'm not sure how many employees Academy has, maybe 100 or at least. That's, those are jobs right there. Those people are going to be paying taxes in our area. I love development, however, too much in a small area is, can be bad. And we, we see the badness here with the, the stormwater problem that has, it started years and years ago, but it, still we can't ignore it. I personally think that the, the issue of the flooding has to be addressed before we do any rezoning. If not, it's just going to get, keep getting pushed down the road and down the road, down the road. And 50 years from now, somebody on the council is going to be sitting here saying, when are we going to fix the flooding on Dewarts Creek, which is now probably a river? For those, for the, for the, that main reason, they're infringing on neighbors and the huge issue of the stormwater, I've got to agree with Robert and, and not support the rezoning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harper. Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to all the residents. It's, it's great to see a, a large group of people from a neighborhood come together for an issue and protect their homes, protect where they live, their quality of life. I only wish I could get that many people in my neighborhood together. Maybe the quality of life in my neighborhood would be better, but so kudos and, and to you guys for coming together and, and making the effort. And certainly, I appreciate you being here. And I also want to echo what Dr. Curlin said and thank our business community for being here. I think we've heard two very good sides to this and it's, it's not an easy decision. I think Mr. Stewart hit the nail on the head. You know, you like to be pro-business, but you like to protect neighborhoods and this certainly doesn't make it easy. I really wasn't going to make any comments other than beyond what I'd made before, but since everybody else chimed in on it, I, I thought I would go on record with a couple of comments. And one is, is I appreciate what Councilman Kellogg said about other properties being available. Certainly, we love to see something go into Acres Center, but I, it's my personal opinion, you really have to be careful when you're dealing with businesses. You can't tell them, oh, we need your store on the west end, you need to go to the west end. Businesses spend a lot of money and a lot of effort determining where they want to be and where it's most profitable for them to be. They, once they come to Gastonia, they may be a good citizen of Gastonia and the business community, they may, they may give back to the community. But getting to Gastonia, they don't know Gastonia yet. They're looking at where they're going to be most profitable and that's what drives their decision. And is if we, as a city, start saying, no, you can't go there, but you can go there if you want, and that's not where they want to be, trust me, despite what Mr. Arthur says, they will not be coming to Gastonia. The second thing I wanted to say was, I agree and appreciate what Dr. Curlin said about the, the 2025 plan. Yes, it's good to have a plan. It's, it's almost necessary. You need to show potential newcomers, especially businesses, commercial development, what you are anticipating for the city and what you are, are planning for the city. But I am not about to say that, that just because we have a comprehensive plan for 2020, 2025, that that can't be changed. It is a plan. It is a, a roadmap. And anybody that's ever been on a trip knows that you may see something to the left or right that interests you and you go off your, your, your trip for a little bit and you take a little side trip. It, it's, it's a roadmap. It can be changed. It's, it's not written in concrete. If we are naive enough to think that five years ago, we're going to make a plan for 25 years out and we're not going to change anything in that written plan for 25 years, we are absolutely crazy. So, I'm not going to pigeonhole myself by saying I'm not going to change anything in 2025 plan. It is a good roadmap. But, so I think we're, we're in a tough position. I appreciate the, the comments made by Councilman Gallagher and Councilman Humphries. I think that we do need to do, regardless of this passes or doesn't pass, Dewarts Creek is not going anywhere except up with all the development we've put in, in, in and around it. And it probably should have been started 20, 30 years ago, but it didn't. And so, we're left with what we have now and I think we need to deal with that. And whether this, this gets approved or not, whether the next development gets approved, if this one doesn't, I, I don't care what, what it is that gets approved, but we need to deal with Dewarts Creek. And I think the city needs to be a part of that decision and part of the process of improving that. I'm sure when these people bought their property, they never imagined that, that the water was going to rise up to their back deck. I don't have to deal with the creek so much as I just went through this with my house and it was just stormwater runoff. So, I know how quickly stormwater can come and how fast. I used to sit in my backyard and in a heavy rain, I could wait approximately 10 minutes and go out my back door and watch the wave that was just coming because, as was demonstrated before, with the funneling effect. So, I appreciate that and I think that the city should be a part of any kind of solution regardless of the decision that's made here tonight. I would like to see the city kind of go on record and make a commitment that we're going to do something about Dewarts Creek, whether it's over at Target, whether it's over at Buffalo Wild Wings and Chuck E. Cheese, or whether it's on the other side where we have residential development. We need to get some kind of plan together and I want to go on record as supporting that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything else? Once again, thank everyone. We're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion and, and certainly, a lot of us ran a lot of this for a long time as, as property owners, homeowners, and just, you've got to make yourself heard and, and you've done an excellent job, both sides tonight. I commend, I commend both sides on this situation. Now, having said that, is there a motion to, is there a motion anyone would like to make regarding this request?
I'd like to make a motion to deny the request for rezoning.
I'll second it.
Dr. Curlin, is the motion to...
And, and close the public hearing. Want to?
Well, not yet.
Can I speak, Mr. Mayor? May I speak, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The voting on the motion will close the public hearing, but if you're, you will include in your motion the statement of consistency and reasonableness as it is currently drafted at the bottom of page 2-4, I would recommend that. You don't have to read it, just say...
I would agree. And I will include in my motion the statement of consistency and reasonableness.
And you agree to that?
That's okay.
Mr. Kellogg?
Kellogg.
You made the second. You made the second.
And you're, you're okay with that? Okay. Down at the, the statement of consistency and reasonableness is in vote to, also a motion and second to deny the request. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Why do we have to include that statement? Why can't we just...
Well, as your legal counsel, I'm, I'm recommending that you include it. Mr. Fields stated during his presentation that he believes as planner, we have to do that, whether we uphold it or deny it. And since the vote is to deny it, the way it's drafted there was written by Mr. Thompson and so I would recommend that you include it in your motion to deny.
I don't agree with the statement.
And then you don't have to vote for the motion. Okay?
Now, you're referring to the very last statement down...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the very last statement.
Yes, sir. May I read the statement for...
May I read the statement for the audience? Because I don't think they've recalled it. It's "The proposed rezoning is inconsistent with the Gastonia 2025 comprehensive plan and represents a significantly more intense land use than the existing zoning designation. Therefore, the city council considers an affirmative vote to not be reasonable and in the public interest."
Now, may I, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, is there a way that that could be rephrased or softened such that you would support the motion to deny? I'm trying to make sure I'm understanding your...
I'm having a hard time understanding what I'm thinking, too. It says, "The proposed rezoning is inconsistent with Gastonia 2025 comprehensive plan." Okay, we can agree to that. It is inconsistent with what's in the plan. So I'm talking this out loud to see if... about it. "And represents a significantly more intense land use than the existing zoning designation." I think we can agree to there, agree to that. "Therefore, the city council considers an affirmative vote to not be reasonable and in the public interest."
And Mr. Pearson, all that language comes from state statute, from some recent changes that the General Assembly made in the past few years. I can't tell you, you know, whether it was two or three or seven or eight, but they made a change to the planning statute, Article 19 of Chapter 168 of the general statutes, saying that they wanted to see some sort of statement about whether our reasoning is reasonable and in the public interest. And the Planning Commission has routinely been adopting those statements in a second vote, following each vote to affirm or deny. This body has not been routinely addressing those. You've been incorporating that into your motion to affirm or deny because it's included in the report from the planning staff.
I guess that's where it loses me, is reasonable and in the public interest. If you vote one way, it's in the interest of part of the public. If you vote the other way, it's in the interest of the other. But you can't say that voting one way or the other is in the best interest of all of the public in Gastonia.
And it is an interesting statutory requirement because there appears to be no penalty for not doing it. But I would recommend that in this instance, we cover all our bases just in case.
Okay, there's a motion, and there's a second. And any questions or any discussion on the motion?
Could you state the motion again?
I will. The motion is to deny and to include the statement of consistency and reasonableness as it is currently drafted at the bottom of page 2-4.
2-4. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much. Now... I want to myself. Thank you very much. I'm sorry that you... Well, it was worth taking an evening for for all of us, but it had to be done. And certainly, I'm in hopes, as Mr. Arthur said and others, that I still would love to see... I'm progressive, always have been, been here forever. Now, can you take it in West Gastonia? I can get away with it because I'm from West Gastonia. You've got to have the statistics and the figures, and they'll all tell you that. But I did see where another one is opening out there above Kentucky Fried Building. So it is. But thank you all for being here, and we'll... We still... Anyone like a five-minute adjournment?
Mr. Mayor, since I have the next two items, I would like that five-minute break if you don't mind.
Okay, all right. You go. You're set at the end.
Henry, we're gonna have your vote now. Hey, I was looking everywhere and it's hooked on. Henry, we're gonna do yours now. Henry? We're gonna do it. Oh, that's my turn then. All right. What we're gonna do is... Okay, what we are planning on doing is, yeah, we're gonna take... Well, we've got item three and item four. Let's talk about this in a minute. Item three and item four, both public hearings, we'll have those. That's the King's Drive closing and a charter revision. But the... And we'll... I think that the traffic ordinance, we'll do it very quickly. Rusty, oh, there you are. And it's a little I didn't see. But then we can go from there. There's some committee reports. What'd you say, transportation?
Transportation, yeah.
Transportation can be postponed, Mayor.
It's been asked that we do some of these at the next meeting, so...
Item number nine can be postponed.
Number nine?
We should keep number six because our folks from the conference center are here.
They're here, that's fine, okay. Well, let's start with... We'll get them in window one here quickly. In the public hearing, I declare a public hearing, open item three. It's a resolution of the City of Council for the City of Gastonia to close King's Drive, and that is on page three, exhibit page number three. Mr. Ash Smith, City Attorney. Ashley?
And this public hearing is open, is that right?
Yeah, he declared it.
Yeah, I said that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and tonight we have a petition under state law to close an unopened street, King's Drive. The petition was signed by Lamar Robinson, Jr., as trustee for the prior shareholders of a corporation that's been dissolved. And I wanna introduce you to you, Mr. Henry Whitesides.
He's new.
Former city attorney and was city attorney until 2002 for at least 25 years. Twenty-seven.
That's right.
And so this is... Henry's been working on this for a while now.
Yes.
And so anyway, this petition was circulated to the staff. There are no public utilities in this street. It was never opened. It was never used. I understand that the plan is to come back with a new plat and subdivide it differently and develop it differently, and we'll see that later in due course, and we'll know what's gonna happen then. But I think this is just kind of a cleanup on Mr. Whitesides and Mr. Robinson's part to get this property ready for development, which is something we all wanna hear.
What's the motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Unless there's anyone signed up to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Whitesides, do you need to be heard?
I would like everybody to listen while I talk, 'cause I just got too listening. We have a creek at the back of this property. I wanna tell you about the creek, you know, it floods, in case y'all are interested.
Well, Counsel, actually, no, we aren't. We've creaked out, I think.
You didn't get your sense of humor from him, did you?
Up and green.
He might have influenced me a little bit, right? Influenced me a little bit, right?
Henry went to law school.
Yeah. Boy, I missed that.
I said Henry went to law school.
A lot of people up here did.
Well, yeah. Okay.
The motion, though, is to approve, Mr. McGeer.
Motion is to approve. It was the... Who by?
I'll second.
Who made the motion? Okay. McGeer and Pierceall. Discussing all in favor?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Henry, it was closed.
One day, you could carry your family home.
Yeah.
But I think that I want you to know I'm gonna bring y'all my business.
Well, you tell us the same thing.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, sir. Item four, the public hearing, a resolution to the General Assembly requesting a charter revision, which is exhibit page number four. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. This is the cleanup revisions to the Gastonia City Charter that was last revised in 1991. It's basically housekeeping to clean up some references that have become outdated, things that have been done away with by the General Assembly, like protest petitions. We need to take those references out. And then we gave up all of our extraterritorial jurisdiction to the county, as many people had requested us to do. So those references need to be taken out. And there were some other minor housekeeping things. As you know, we've talked about this twice now. This has to be done by local bill, and the local legislative delegation has to introduce this. Your resolution has to be unanimous in order for the delegation to do that in the short session, and then they will have to be unanimous. And in speaking with Representative Mum Gardner and Senator Harrington about this, they wanted to know if there would be a public hearing. A public hearing is not required, but they wanted the public to have the opportunity to have input, so it has been advertised for a public hearing. It was... The public hearing is tonight. There is someone signed up to speak. I want you to know that I've been out of the office this week in the federal courthouse, but several phone calls have been fielded by Mr. Munn and Ms. McGee with regard to questions that folks have had, and we've tried to answer them that, you know, this is basically a housekeeping bill. But there are things in the charter, the current charter, that were raised, like the ability for people to do a petition for a sidewalk and then assess everyone on the street, even if it's not unanimous. Now, we do that with water and sewer, but there were some folks who called in about that. They didn't like it, but it's already in there. We have not used the sidewalk petition assessment program in the 21 years that I've been here because the neighbors have never brought forward such a petition. There's also a section about liens being put on property for unpaid bills. That is in the charter. It is in current use. There were some people who did not like that. So that is where we are. To staff, the changes were just cleanup changes. There was nothing big about the structure of government being changed. And I'll be glad to take any questions, and then we should call anybody who signed up to speak.
Mayor, two things I discussed with Mr. Munn about some of the things Mr. Smith had just discussed, that Mr. Munn said we'd never, all the years, made people pay for a sidewalk. We... I suggest remove that, that we don't assess people for sidewalks. We don't do that. There are sidewalks. If something happens to one, we pay to fix it. The next thing is, was... I know a gentleman called me, was concerned about if somebody were not to pay their utility bill, that that would revert back to the responsibility of the property owner. Well, that's not fair. The person that's renting the property would have a contract with the citizen for the rent, and that would be his responsibility to collect the rent if they skip out and don't pay it. But we have... But that person that gets the utilities with the city would have a contract with the city, so that would be our responsibility. And as Mr. Munn says, we never have assessed the landowner anyway, so I'd like to see that removed also. And so let Mr. Munn maybe expand on those things, if he could.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, the first one is that section 6.3, which is on page seven, and this is the authority to order street and sidewalk assessments without petition. And that's one that we really haven't used. Now, it is this thing that you have the power to do that, but we don't do that. So that is... And we haven't used that in 30 or 40 years, and I don't know how long it's been. The other one is on page nine, which is the public enterprise user fee and charges, section 9.1. What we do now, we use a set-off. The state has a debt set-off program, and for instance, at the end of every year, there's half a million dollars' worth of utilities that go unpaid. But we'll get back a couple hundred thousand. We'll almost get half of it back through the debt set-off. And what it does is, is if you get... When you file your income tax and there's money back, they will deduct it because you left owing the city money. That's very effective. In fact, we actually have collection agencies that also will take some of this, and their work is not nearly as productive, and that doesn't cost us anything. So that's what we do. The only time we ever really attach onto the property is for taxes, and that is not what we're talking about here. So both of these provisions, it's interesting, at least when Ms. McGee and I were looking at it, didn't look like either one of us had ever remembered using it. So it's one of those things, if you want to, you can consider it for the next council meeting, maybe, and take those two out, but...
Well, the introduction of local bills is May 3rd, so if we wanna submit this, we gotta get it in. So if you want those two out as well, tell us, and we'll just redline those two also and send it to the delegation. But we do have someone signed up, so before we kinda get to where we're deliberating, maybe we need to hear who's signed up.
Claire, there's a public hearing, and we do have a sign-up sheet of Don Barkley, Woodson Road. Comments limited to three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel.
Yes, sir, Mr. Barkley.
Y'all are here. Thank you. On the positive side, I will say one thing. All this information was posted on the city's website. Now, it is kinda confusing to me that he calls it housekeeping. At the same time, if, according to what is written, if you don't pay your utility bills, you're gonna lose your house, right? And Mr. Munn says we have never used it, so if we've never used that, we don't need it. Let's take it out. The other thing that concerns me is that 6.3, the widening of streets and sidewalks. Now, if you've never used it, take that one out. But apparently, the way this one is written, some counsel could decide that they want a sidewalk. If the property owner wishes to pay a fee in appeal, then he can do that. So why pay a... Have to pay a fee for something you don't want to start with? But that's what I'm opposed to, just those two items. Now, I am curious about one thing. Everybody's up here talking about economic development, all right? I can understand why people skip out on utility bills. What you're trying to do, I think, will have the opposite effect, because not every landowner or property owner that owns a house and rents it is a slumlord. Some would like to go along with the tenant when they get in hard times and put it off for a couple of weeks. It's one thing to lose rent. It's another thing to have a lien put on your property because a tenant didn't pay his utility bills. So I think you're hurting the people that need to help the most, and that's my biggest concern now, as far as the public hearing. I know the outcome of the public hearing, because according to your website, the city believes unanimously that it would be in the best interest, so I think the council's going to vote for this. However, by opening up the question of the city charter, I wonder, could individuals also contact the local delegation to have some things taken out of the city charter? As an example, I have never heard of Duke Power for closing on a house for not getting payments. I don't know if they have that authority or not. The City of Gastonia has the authority to raise electric, water, sewer rates, even garbage pickup. Duke Power has to go through the utilities board. People who live in Gastonia don't get the protection of the utilities board. I have heard that city rates are 20% higher than Duke's. If they are, why are we paying more and getting less service? Thank you for your time, Mr. ...
Thank you. Thank you. Yes?
Ash, I wanted to ask you because I know we need to get it in for the deadline for local bills, but there are these two, and there's probably a couple others, that have been raised that need to be taken out. Is this something like these two? We know we don't ever use these two. I don't think anybody up here has any opposition to removing those. Is that something that you can take out and still have ready? Or do we need to go ahead and pass what we've got and then come back and look at it later for next year? Or what is your recommendation to us? Get this in and be the most efficient about doing it?
Well, we put, you know, a couple of boxes in, you know, asked the legislative drafting office if this should be taken out. So if you want me to add the same box for these two sections and do it unanimously, then we can get it to the local delegation. If we can't do it unanimously, then we won't be able to do it this session, and we'll just have to wait till the long session.
So unanimously, you mean to take those two out, and everything else is okay?
If that is the will of the council.
And I make a motion, we take those two sections out, and...
What, two sections?
There's two sections, 6.3 and 9...
Point one.
Point one.
Nine point one and 6.3. I'll second. And approve the rest as written?
Yeah, as written.
Yes, I'll second that then.
Gallagher, you second.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions, discussion?
Ash, does this... It doesn't have to go for another public comment period, does it?
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Okay.
Anywhere?
Thank you.
Was there someone else to speak to this?
Uh-uh.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
Okay.
Okay. Item five, it's traffic ordinance, speed limit reduction on Westbrook Circle, Midwood and Sherwood. This will take with a minute. It's item number five there.
Mayor, Members of Council. In response to a request from council and looking at a recent accident that happened in the Wesley Acres neighborhood, we did a traffic study, put the counters out, and we were looking at speed humps or maybe lowering the traffic or the speed limit in the neighborhood. The volumes on the road came back very low, 40 cars a day, 112 cars a day, very much below the speed hump policy. We did notice that the speeds are slightly higher than what we're used to seeing in other neighborhoods. So at this point in time, staff would recommend that if a change is made in that neighborhood, it would be to reduce the speed limit from 35 miles an hour to 25 mile an hour, and then we go back and talk with the neighborhood some more about speed humps and any other traffic calming that might be appropriate, and then bring that back to council for whatever action.
Questions, Mr. Paul?
Yes.
Rusty, when you do make that change over from the 35 miles an hour down to 25, are you gonna be putting out that police radar thing that shows the people?
Speed detector?
Yeah, speed detector.
We would probably put the one on the wagon out there. We'd have to work with the PD and do that, but yeah, we could certainly do that.
Just so they get used to it.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Pierceall makes motion?
Is there a second?
Gallagher? Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, now, item six, Gastonia Conference Center, they've been sitting here. We wanna... Christie? Gastonia Conference Center Annual Budget Fiscal Year 2016, 2017. Christie Christie is Economic Development Coordinator. I do.
How do you?
Go right ahead.
Ladies and Mayor, Counsel, in accordance with our contract with Colonnair, they are required to submit a proposed annual budget for the upcoming year, and the city is required to approve that prior to May 1st. It will then be adopted into our city budget. That is the information that you have before you this evening, referenced in exhibit 6-2. Just a couple notes as you are looking at this. The 1516 budget that you see does reflect a 10-month... reflect a 10-month history with them, and then the 16-17 is 12 months. You'll notice that they have proposed an increase in revenues with an overall projected loss of $93,362. This would be the first time of a, of a projected loss, budgeted loss, below $100,000. So we certainly have seen consistent improvement over the last few months with them. Both Michael and Jerry with the Conference Center are here this evening if you have any questions.
Questions? Yes, well, we have a couple. Go ahead.
I don't have a question, I was just going to make a motion.
Oh, well, then let me ask my question first. Because these guys have waited all night, and so they just can't wait to hear this question.
You're walking better.
In fact, I even thought of two questions. So, first one, Michael, with regard to your labor percent of revenue, okay, it was approximately 60.4% in the current year, and you're projecting it because of increased revenues, obviously, you go down to 47.2%. How does that compare to, can you, can we compare it to industry standards? I mean, is, is that a good percentage? Or is that still a little high?
It all depends, it just based on the, the type of business you're dealing with. I mean, because if it's a food event, you obviously need servers, and, but if it's, say, like, just a meeting where they're, where they have a room rental, you just don't have that. So it all depends on what kind of revenue it is, basically.
So, but it's blended, it's blended for your book of business, but...
But it is around standard. I mean, we do, I mean, there's, just for the size of the facility, I mean, I guess you could compare it to industry standard. I mean, we have, we just have the executive chef position, you know, so he handles basically everything in the kitchen, and he's able to output a lot, whereas, and he's even washing dishes, whereas most places you'll have a dishwasher. So, I think there's instances where we're saving money, but there might be other instances where we're, you know, spending more money. But I think at the end of the day, it's probably pretty comparable.
Okay. And then the other quick question was just, I noticed, you know, the marketing budget, which again, in the current year was for 10 months, is, is actually higher than what you've, you know, budgeted for this coming year, which is 12 months, and that percentage of 1.5% seems extremely low, so tell me what thought process is there?
Well, within regards to marketing, we didn't just want to continue to do what had been done in the past. When we market the building, we want to make sure we can qualify the results. So, when we looked at some of the marketing that's been done in the past, and when we approached them and said, or when we approached, you know, looked at sales, we couldn't qualify that said, "Well, we paid this company five grand, but we didn't have any return on the investment." So, the thought process is that, moving forward, we really value where we're marketing our dollars, and not just continuing to spin the wheels and do the same thing over and over again.
Okay. Well, good, I'm glad you're doing that, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, because you just don't want to, obviously, rubber stamp prior activity if it doesn't prove successful.
Right, and I think, in this business, I mean, word of mouth helps, obviously, and continuing, if you have a group this year, you want to have them next year, so you just want to do a good job, and then you'll get that business to repeat. And it's just about a matter of getting them in the door, and once you do that, you can prove to them that you can come back, and then you're not spending any marketing dollars.
Well, I think your biggest marketer is standing right next to you, right? No, not, not that one, that, that one over there, Jerry, you know?
Yes, yeah, and obviously, with the budget, I mean, we're, what we're looking at is, obviously, we have to drive revenue, and we have to sell the building, and that's, you know, what Jerry's been hired to do, and that's what we're leaning on. And we're also looking at new partnerships as part of marketing, where we've now partnered with the Charlotte CVB, we're looking at partnering with the National Association of Catering Executives, and with International Society of Event Specialists, because those are people that just through networking are out there selling without being on anybody's payroll, you know? An annual membership of $600 gives me access to 100 other members in those organizations, and really, to network with them and attend their events and what have you, host events that they would come to at the Conference Center, they start talking about it, they start selling on our behalf and bringing us qualified clients.
Thank you.
Comments, questions?
You know, I, I just wanted to make a comment that you're doing a great job, appreciate everything you're doing, and of course, Michael, over seeing it, and Jerry, he's like the host, you walk into the, his house, and it's just, you know, anything he can do for you, he is all over it. So, what a good face on, on, on the front of the Conference Center, so thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you, and I'm glad to be there, appreciate it.
Motion?
Yeah, I want to make one motion here. I recommend, city staff is recommending approval for the fiscal year 16-17 Gastonia Conference Center budget.
Gallagher, is there a second? Dr. Curly?
Yes, sir.
Is that you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor, please, raise your hand. It is unanimous.
Gentlemen, just one question, is there anything the City of Gastonia can do to help you guys be more successful?
Put them on the agenda earlier.
We could get item one, no, but honestly, and her staff, she's been really, you know, instrumental in helping us out with Stephen and Vern, they've really been a great liaison, and really offered their assistance, and really helped us out, so appreciate them, and not just Christie, everybody else, Melody and Bev and everybody. And it's a learning experience for us also, you know, the new kids on the block, so to speak, and we're like, who do we call for this, who do we call for that? And they help us out every time.
Great job, really, keep up the good work.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I want to ask you a question, Michael, please. If we ever get this hotel built, finished uptown, how will that help?
Well, it'll obviously help with the type of business that you can get. Right, but at the same time, I don't want to keep relying on, well, we're never going to grow if we don't get a hotel. I mean, obviously, it would help, but it's, we're not going to, you know, it's not going to be our hindrance. But it's going to help with your two, three-day meetings, having those meeting planners that can have their guests stay overnight, and then they just wake up and come to the meeting. So, right now, you just have the one-day events where people are driving in and then have to go home, so ideally, you know, it would help significantly. So, and we're hoping, you know, the one hotel opens up soon enough, and that'd be, I think, 35 rooms, so anything's a start.
Okay. I fell asleep.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a great evening.
And lady. Okay, now, item seven, audit bids, item eight, public safety, item nine, transportation.
I checked with, with the manager, and, and he said there was nothing that was, you know, so timely with the audit bids actions that we couldn't put off to the next meeting.
Okay. Public safety? Jim?
I concur the same way. We could put this off until the next meeting now, in May, first meeting in May.
Okay. Transportation?
Same way, your honor, I was going to ask the city attorney, do we need a motion to move these to a new agenda, or can it just be done?
Let's do a motion, let's do a motion.
I'll make the motion that we move items seven, eight, and nine to the first meeting in May.
Second? Second, Gallagher. Okay. Discussion, all in favor? Okay, city attorney's report?
No report, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Talk enough tonight.
Okay. City manager's report?
Mr. Mayor, I could go on at length, but I think I'm wise, I'm wise to say no report.
Okay. City council report?
Let's start over here. Stop it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank all of our city employees for the outstanding work they do every day, out and about throughout the city, all 800-plus. Just a reminder that individual Gastonia Grizzlies game tickets go on sale Friday at 10 o'clock at the Sims Park. Want you to, everybody to remember to keep our military personnel and first responders and their families in your prayers. And as I brought up at the last meeting, I'd like to get the council's approval to speak on behalf of the council at the county commissioners' meeting next Tuesday concerning the funds I'm going to request for museum visits by the eighth graders.
We didn't, we didn't approve that.
Not last time, no, sir. No. Okay. Motion by, Mike, it here?
I'll second.
Second by, Pierce, some? Pierce, some?
Oh, by me, I'm sorry, I second.
Did you say that?
Yes, sir, I did, yes, sir.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Go get them, big.
And the very last item, this past Sunday, the Luray, Digital Luray exhibit, I went and spent a little bit of time there. It was, it was amazing, it was, the, I believe it was sponsored or put on by UNC. The videos and slide presentations that they have, all the way back to, pretty close when the mill opened, there's so much history there, you could, you could spend hours looking at all of it, but it was, it was a great trip. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mike, it here?
Show the streetcar?
Yeah.
The streetcar running up, down, and busting?
Yeah. I remember it used to be in front of the old Y. Mr. Pierce?
Just two things, Mayor, April 30th is the Maples on Main dedication, I'm very excited about that, but I don't want to overlook the fact that we are also on April 30th having the Safe Kids event, and that's in the Kohl's parking lot, I believe, isn't it? And that starts at 10:00. So I, I do want to, so you can go to the Safe Kids, have fun there, and then you can come down to Maples on Main afterwards and enjoy downtown, so two great activities I want to let everybody know about.
Gallagher?
Three things, Mr. Mayor. One, spoke at the DAR, Daughters of American Revolution, I spoke on my favorite president. They asked me to come and speak, and I chose a good Republican named Harry S. Truman, and I found out the S means nothing.
Harry S. Truman is a good Republican. Now, wait a minute.
Wait a minute, he's a good Democrat.
Yeah.
And that was really, really good time. Second, I'd like to just let everybody know that Lise DeDees is having a concert that's coming up on June 25th. Matthew West is going to be at the First Assembly on Myrtle School Road, tickets are available through their website, you know, they're available now. And second, third, last thing, my son had his birthday on Saturday, just want to wish Jordan a happy birthday. We took him out to the Webb Theater, and it was excellent, great food. Also, my daughter Caroline's birthday is today, and just want to wish her a happy birthday as well, she is 29.
Great.
And that is my report, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Dr. Curly?
And Councilman Gallagher, we have something in comment, in common, because today is my wife's birthday.
That's right.
So I wish her a happy birthday, and we've been happily married for 35 years, and so, and she has once again, you know, given me permission to miss part of her birthday tonight, so...
You make it up, you make it up.
But we'll go home and blow out a candle when we get home, so, anyway, so, but that's it, that's the only thing I have.
Okay.
I have two really quick things. First, Friday night and Saturday, I went downtown, awesome, awesome to see so many people down there, hard to get a parking spot, and Saturday, of course, was the, the Community Foundation run, but it was great to see downtown booming and bustling. And the second thing, you all are invited to a small business forum Thursday, the 28th, at First Legacy Credit Union at 321, it's co-sponsored by Diversity Professional Associates, and just hoping to hear from small business individuals and try to just hear their concerns and issues, so, that's all I've got.
All right.
Yeah, what time is it?
Oh, I'm sorry, 6:30 to 8:00.
PM?
Yeah, yeah, PM.
I'd be there otherwise.
I was going to say, no, no, not 8:00 AM, that's for sure.
Well, it's only been four hours, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Good night.